All right. Good morning, everyone. Seeing that the board members are now present, Brooks, will you please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Good morning. Member Rodriguez. I see Member Rodriguez. I'm just making sure she's in.
Are you connected to audio, Brooks?
I should be.
We're not yet...
We're not yet hearing you.
Brooks, speak...
Yeah, the mic says it's live here, and we can hear me in the room.
We're seeing you. Okay.
Would you like me to call the roll? President Darling Hammond, this is the quorum. This is Judy Sias.
Please do.
Okay. Thank you. Member Banaca.
Here.
Member Darling Hammond, President Darling Hammond. Member Escobedo.
Here.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Here.
Member Lewis.
Here.
Member McQuillan.
Here.
Member Olken.
Here.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Here.
Member Patilla Bronson.
Here.
Good morning.
And Member Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Terrific. In closed session, the board took action on Mark S. versus State, and now we are looking for the public comment slide to go up so that we can discuss the waiver consent items. Waivers W. 1 through W. 19. We'll open the phone line for the public comment queue and give it a couple of minutes to be sure people can catch up with us. Is there any comment on those waiver items, public comment?
We do have a few people in the queue currently. I will open the phone line now. Good morning. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller ending with the last four digits, 5765, you are live. Please start your public comment now. Okay, hearing then. Moving on to the next caller. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller ending in the last... Okay, I was told we need to hold off on public comment for just one moment. I think they're having some technical issues. I apologize.
Okay. All right, I think we're gonna just go ahead and take a five-minute break, let the technology folks work out the needs there. If you need a cup of coffee or whatever this morning, we'll reconvene at about 9:15. All right. Welcome back, everyone. I think our technology issues have been resolved, and we will ask Brooks to call the roll to reestablish the quorum.
Great, thank you, and thank you, everyone, for your patience. Member Rodriguez.
Here.
Member Patilla Bronson.
Sorry, can you hear me here?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Here.
Member Olken.
Here.
Member McQuillan.
Here.
Member Lewis.
Here.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Here.
Member Escobedo.
Here.
President Darling Hammond.
Here.
Member Banaca.
Here.
We have a quorum. And just as a brief reminder, as we come back from the break, for those that may have called in, that we are dealing right now with the waivers on consent items W. 1 through W. 19. If you're calling about a subsequent item, please hang up and call back in for that item. Thank you.
Thank you. And Brooks, I don't know if you intend to be off video, but we are not seeing you on video right now.
I do intend to be...
Okay. The... So, is there any public comment?
Yes, it looks like we do have some public comment, and again, this is for W. 1 through 19, the waiver consent calendar. I will open the phone line now. Good morning. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller ending... Go ahead, caller.
This is former Governor Jerry Brown. I want to speak very briefly to the Samoa Beach Academy. This is an ex charter...
Apologies, Governor Brown, but that's actually gonna be on a subsequent item. Right now, we're dealing only with our waiver items.
Okay, so do I call in, or do I just stay on the phone?
You can just call back in after we finish this up.
Okay, so I hang up and then just call back, same number?
Yes, please, sir. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, next caller. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller ending with the last four...
Am I on now?
You are. Please go ahead with your public comment.
My name is Lisa Kimada from Monobello Teachers. I'm calling in opposition to allowing the time charter, any further opening to Monobello.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. We are currently taking public comment for waiver consent items W. 1 through W. 19. We just ask if you could please call back in a couple minutes, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much. And it looks like that concludes public comment for the waiver items.
All right. Thank you very much. At this point, given that there's no other public comment, I now ask for a motion on waivers 1 through 19.
Show move.
Second.
Second.
Terrific. We'll now have a roll call vote. Brooks, will you please call the roll?
Member Rodriguez.
Aye.
Member Patilla Bronson.
Yes.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Olken. Member McQuillan. Member Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Escobedo.
Yes.
President Darling Hammond.
Yes.
Member Banaca.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to item 16. Item 16 is the appeal of the denial of a petition for the establishment of a classroom-based charter school pursuant to California Education Code Section 47605-K2. And the California Department of Education recommends that the State Board of Education hear the SBA appeal. This recommendation is based on CDE's review of the appeal and the documentary record. SBA has submitted sufficient evidence to hear the appeal, and there are no grounds to summarily deny, per the recommendation. This item will be presented by Stephanie Farland of the CDE. Stephanie, please begin.
Good morning. President Darling Hammond, board members, Chief Deputy Nicely. Let's go in here. So, we are here to hear this item, which is to ask the State Board to hear or summarily deny the appeal of Samoa Beach Academy. Little background on this item. The Samoa Beach Academy petition proposes a new grade, 9 through 12, charter school. The charter submitted its petition... The petitioners submitted its petition to the Northern Humboldt Union High School District pursuant to ED Code 47605-A. The district denied the petition on September 14, 2021, by a vote of 5 to 0. SBA then appealed to the denial to the Humboldt County Board of Education pursuant to ED Code Section 47605-K1AI. The county denied the petition on February 9, 2022, by a vote of 5 to 0. The charter petitioners then submitted its petition on appeal to the California State Board of Education on March 11, 2022 pursuant to ED Code Section 47605-K2. As stated, the Department of Education is recommending that the State Board hear the SBA appeal. The Advisory Commission on Charter Schools pursuant to 47605-K2D will hold a public hearing to review the appeal and documentary record and shall submit a recommendation to the State Board whether there is sufficient evidence to hear the appeal or to summarily deny review of the appeal based on the documentary record. The ACCS did, at its June 14 meeting, hear the appeal, review the documentary record, and the ACCS accepted the CDE recommendation and moved to recommend that the SBE hear the SBA appeal. The motion was passed on a vote of 7 to 1. SBA has submitted all required documents and met all timelines pursuant to ED Code Section 47605-K2A. It submitted its appeal, a record of the findings from the district and county, and a written submission with citations to the documentary record. NHUHSD and HCBOE provided written oppositions with specific citations to the documentary record pursuant to ED Code Section 47605-K2C. The aforementioned documents demonstrate that there is a factual dispute concerning the district and county's decisions to deny SBA's petition. Based on the CDE's review of all documents, the CDE finds sufficient evidence for the SBE to hear the appeal. In this item, the SBE shall decide to either hear the appeal or summarily deny review of the appeal based on the documentary record. If the SBE decides to hear the appeal as recommended by the CDE and ACCS, the matter will be considered in the following item. So as we stated, the CDE recommends that the SBE hear the SBA appeal. And as I stated earlier, the ACCS, at its June 14 meeting, accepted that recommendation and moved also to recommend that the SBE hear the SBA appeal.
Are you done with your presentation?
That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you. So we have the public comment slide now, and we will open the phone line for the public comment queue. The item is limited to a decision as to whether or not to hear the appeal. People wishing to make comments on the merits of the appeal should please wait and comment on the next item, which is item 17. Members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item may do so by calling the telephone number and using the access code provided on the slide that is shown now. While we're waiting, I want to ask our liaisons, Vice President Glover Woods and Member Olken, if they have any initial comments. We'll check then to see if anyone has clarifying questions, and then go to public comment on whether or not to hear the appeal. And I'm gonna ask Vice President Glover Woods to see if she has any framing comments for us.
Thank you, President Darling Hammond. I just wanted to underscore a couple of items that Director Farland shared with us. One, the ACCS did have opportunity to hear from the petitioners as well as a representative for both the district and the county office, and decided there was enough evidence for us to actually hear the appeal itself. So, again, just to underscore, the action that we take on this particular item is to decide to hear the appeal. It does not have anything to do with the actual merit of the appeal itself.
Thank you. And Member Olken, anything you'd like to add at this point?
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to add that the... As the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools was deliberating, they were grappling a bit with their new role as described through... in 1505. And so it took a little bit of thinking for them because it's a change in the process. But as they thought about what their role is, they concurred with CDE that, in fact, there was enough of a factual dispute that this should be heard by the State Board.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any clarifying questions from members of the board before we go to public I'm seeing no hands raised. In that case, we'll see if there's any public comment.
We do have some callers in the queue for public comment. I will open the phone line now. Good morning. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Thanks for the opportunity to address the school board. My name's Tom McMahon. I am the president of the Humboldt County School Board, and I'm a retired educator with 27 years' experience, all of it in Humboldt County. My decision to deny the appeal for the Samoa Beach Academy was based on my thorough review of the documents submitted, my consideration of substantial public input, and the presentations offered by both parties during the public hearing. I'm an avid supporter of quality career technical education for the students and local community, but I could not support the model and plan presented by Samoa Beach Academy. My concerns were the model did not present a sound educational program for all students, especially those with special needs and the underprivileged. The program is highly unlikely to be successfully implemented due to the unrealistic enrollment projections and the accompanying budget projections, and the lack of availability of specialized credential teachers to fill the anticipated need for...
I'm sorry, sir. If you could please... I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt. If you could please call back for the next item. We are currently taking public comment for item number 16. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
I believe I'm calling for the next item as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It is confusing.
Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. I'm Eric Premack with the Charter Schools Development Center. Want to note that by any reasonable process or standard, the local denial was unlawful and therefore constituted an abusive discretion that should be heard today. Therefore, we do urge the board to vote yes on this item and hear the appeal fully. In my... I will note, though, that in my 30 years of working on education policy, the underlying statutes here are just horribly drafted and beg a lot of questions that the board needs to step up and deal with. We addressed these in the letter that we shared with the board last week, and we hope that there will be a discussion of these more thoroughly in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Caroline Neuhaus Wesley, calling from Safira Education Associates, and I urge the State Board of Education to hear this item. There is enough evidence that there is a factual dispute that needs to be discussed, and since this is the first appeal coming to you since AB 1505, it is important that the board hear the appeal to determine the abuse of discretion as we move forward with charters in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for item number 16.
All right. Having concluded public comment, I want to open the floor for discussion with the board. Is there anyone who'd like to ask any questions or make any comments? I am seeing no hands going up, so would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move that we... that I move that we hear the appeal and align to CDE's recommendation on this item.
Second thought.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Brooks, can you call the roll for the vote?
Member Rodriguez.
Aye.
Member Patilla Bronson.
Yes.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member McQuillan. Member Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods. Member Escobedo.
Yes.
President Darling Hammond.
Yes.
Member Banaca.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much, Stephanie. And now we're gonna move on to item 17. Item 17 is a public hearing regarding the appeal of the denial of the petition for the establishment of the classroom-based charter school pursuant to California Education Code 47605-K2, consideration of the allegations of abusive discretion made by Samoa Beach Academy, which was denied by the Northern Humboldt Union High School District and the Humboldt County Board of Education. The California Department of Education recommends that the SBE affirm the NHUHSD and HCBOE decisions to deny the petition to establish Samoa Beach Academy. The item will be presented by Stephanie Farland of the CDE. Stephanie, you may begin.
Thank you. Good morning again. In this item, the California State Board of Education will hear the Samoa Beach Academy appeal pursuant to California Education Code 47605-K2E. The SBE may either affirm the determination of the governing board of the school district or the county board of education, or both of those determinations, or reverse only upon a determination that there was an abuse of discretion. In the previous item, the SBE decided to hear the appeal based on the documentary record. So for those on the board that are used to the previous standard of review of appeals, this will look and feel different. The CDE is not reviewing the charter petition as it has in the past. We're reviewing this written submission by the charter petitioners with their specific citations to the documentary record, and any written opposition from the district and/or county with their specific citations to the record, to determine if there has been an abuse of discretion by the district or county boards of education or both. We focus our review on those written submissions. Each of the appeals that comes before this board will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. The California Department of Education recommends that the SBE affirm the Northern Humboldt Union High School District's and Humboldt County Board of Education's decisions to deny the petition to establish SBA pursuant to ED Code Section 47605-K2D. This recommendation is based on the CDE's determination that the documentary record indicates that neither the NHUHSD nor the HCBOE abused its discretion in denying SBA's petition. I will most likely be saying district and county moving forward because those initials are very hard to say without tripping up. So there was an information memo that was posted on June 30 that outlines the SBE's role under the new appeal and review standards. I will just cover a few of the points covered in that memo. The role of the SBE in charter schools pursuant to ED Code Section 47605-K2E, the role of the SBE is as follows. The SBE shall either hear the appeal or summarily deny review of the appeal based on the documentary record, which you did in the previous item. If the SBE hears the appeal, the board may affirm the determination of the governing board of the school district or the county board of education or both of those determinations, or may reverse only upon a determination that there was an abuse of discretion. Abusive discretion is the most deferential standard of review. The SBE is required to give deference to the decision of the school district governing board and county board of education to deny the petition. The SBE's review is limited to a determination of whether the district governing board's or county board's decision to deny the charter petition was arbitrary, capricious, entirely lacking in evidentiary support, unlawful, or procedurally unfair. The CDE's review of SBA's written submission, which detailed with specific citations to the documentary record how the governing board of the school district and the county board of education abused their discretion. The CDE also reviewed the documentary record as cited by SBA in their written submission, districts and counties findings, and the districts and counties opposition. Based on its review, the CDE will make a recommendation to the State Board to either affirm or reverse the decisions of the governing boards of the school district and the county based on the presence or absence of an abuse of discretion in the denial of the charter So now we will move into Samoa Beach Academy's allegations of abusive discretion. SBA states that the district and county's decisions to deny the charter petition are not supported by substantial evidence. SBA's written submission detailing the specific allegations regarding the district's findings can be found on pages 562 to 580 of the documentary record from the HCBOE. SBA's written submission detailing the specific allegations regarding HCBOE's findings can be found on page 537 to 552 of the documentary record from the county. So all of the detailed information regarding their claims can be found in item attachment 1, and we will be going into some detail in later slides. SBA states that the district and county did not proceed in the manner required by law and therefore abused their discretion in denying SBA's petition. The district failed to comply with equal time and procedures guarantees. The district and county each failed to comply with statutory requirement to maintain and produce a transcript record, and the county impermissibly denied the charter petition on the basis that SBA did not reobtain signatures. Districts and counties' oppositions to SBA's appeal. NHUHSD's opposition states that its denial of SBA's petition was based on evidence demonstrating the following findings. You can find that on pages 6 through 22. The SBA presents an unsound educational program for the pupils to be enrolled in the charter school, and the petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program set forth in the petition. Additionally, the district argues that the procedural claims in SBA's appeal do not demonstrate an abuse of discretion. The county... Did I skip a slide? No, I didn't. Okay. The county opposition to SBA's appeal. HCBOE's opposition states that it did not abuse its discretion by not recording the meeting at which SBA's petition was denied, and that its findings in support of denying SBA's petition met all requirements of the law, and that could be found in their opposition letter, pages 4 to 9. The county denied SBA's petition based on the following findings. The SBA petition presents an unsound educational program for the pupils to be enrolled in the charter school. The petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program set forth in the petition. The petition does not contain the number of signatures required. Based on the CDE's review of SBA's written submission, documentary record, and supporting documentation, and the NHUHSD's and HCBOE's opposition, the CDE has determined that the district and county did not abuse their discretion in the denial of the SBA petition. A summary of the district and county's findings regarding the SBA petition, SBA's allegations of abuse of discretion, and the district and county's oppositions are all provided in attachment 1. CDE's review of district's findings. After reviewing the documentary record and supporting documentation submitted by the parties to this appeal, the CDE has determined that NHUHSD's findings were supported by evidence. NHUHSD based their decision to deny SBA's charter on the following findings, which were supported by evidence in the documentary record. The charter school presents an unsound educational program for the pupils to be enrolled in the charter school. The petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program set forth in the petition. The district finding of unsound educational program. The district's written findings set forth... The district's written findings set forth specific facts based on evidence in the documentary record, including but not limited to proposed course offerings and staffing plans raise concerns that the educational program is not likely to be of educational benefit to students. SBA's budgeted per special education pupil spending is lower than comparable schools in the area and does not account for transportation or an alternative placement. The petition's description of the special education program includes the use of paraprofessionals, yet paraprofessionals are not included in the petition's budget. SBA proposes both resource specialist program services and special day class placements, but their staffing plan includes only a single education teacher. The district finding of demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program. The district's written findings set forth specific facts based on evidence in the documentary record, including but not limited to SBA's special education budget includes errors in calculating special education revenues for unduplicated students. SBA's budget assumes they will not need to serve severe students that produce related high costs. As an independent charter, one high-cost student could be devastating to a budget with virtually no reserve. Several figures in SBA's cash flow projections are unclear as to how the calculations were reached. High facilities cost will require SBA's enrollment to grow at a rate far exceeding most charter schools. Multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, is a framework requiring collaborative work, robust use of data, intensive training, and professional development. The petition propose proposes only a point-five full-time equivalent counselor to support MTSS. The petition budget does not allocate specific funding for MTSS. The petition's proposed teacher compensation is less competitive than other local employers. The CDE reviewed the county's findings. After reviewing the complete documentary record and supporting documentation submitted by the parties to this appeal, the CDE has determined that two of HCBOE's three findings were supported by evidence in the documentary record. The charter school presents an unsound educational program for the pupils to be enrolled in the charter school, and the petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program set forth in the petition. Four seven six oh five six C states that the governing board must make written findings setting forth specific facts to support one or more findings when they review a charter petition. The county finding of unsound educational program. The county's written findings set forth specific facts based on evidence in the documentary record, including but not limited to the design of SBA's career technical education program limits student choice and is likely to compromise student engagement. Proposed course offerings and staffing plans raise concerns that the educational program is not likely to be of educational benefit to students. MTSS is not a specific intervention, but instead is a framework around which evidence-based interventions are built. Instead, the petition gives a formula for when certain interventions are used. The proposed program emphasizes supporting students through MTSS and restorative practices. Staff in the program must have designated time and effective training to implement the petition. SBA underestimates the likely English learner percentage based on its proposed location and is unclear how the proposed program can support a larger EL population. Continuing with the unsound educational program findings, the county. The county, uh, writes, "The petition proposes a resource specialist program model of services with push-in and pull-out services and a special day class and online specialist programs, all taught and/or coordinated by a single teacher." SBA's special education description includes the use of paraprofessionals, but the budget does not include funding for paraprofessionals. The petition proposes to secure the special education staff and services as needed with assistance from SBA's SLPA and/or County Office of Education, but the petitioners have not reached out to the Humboldt Del Norte SLPA or the Eldorado County Charter SLPA regarding membership and/or what supports could be provided by the SLPA. SBA's budget does not account for realistic costs associated with special education in the first year of operations. The petition's budget did not include costs that accurately reflect the scope for the meals program. The county finding for demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement program. The county's written findings set forth specific facts based on evidence in the documentary record, including but not limited to SBA projects unrealistic enrollment that far exceeds the enrollment of charter schools in the area. SBA projects a ninety-five percent attendance rate, which exceeds local high school averages in both local districts, leading to over-projection of LCFF funds. SBA's petition does not indicate any student support shown to increased attendance. SBA's special education budget includes errors in calculating special education revenues for unduplicated students, and there is no budget for food service staff, maintenance, custodial staff, paraprofessional staff, or a secretary registrar, if each of which are contemplated in the petition. The petition states that food services will be outsourced, however, the budget does not account for staffing to heat and serve meals or to supervise mealtimes. In addition, SBA's proposed lease includes an annual increase but does not reflect a standard percentage-based increase. Lease costs for the five-year term are as follows, and it is on the screen. In addition to rent and utilities, SBA's lease requires SBA to pay all property expenses, including real estate tax, building insurance, and maintenance. Continuing under demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement program. The county finds SBA's petition does not indicate how the petitioners will overcome the difficulty of hiring qualified teachers, especially CTE teachers in Humboldt County, where the teacher shortage is potentially leading to a CTE program crisis. SBA's proposed staffing plan includes a greater workload and lower compensation than local area schools and districts. SBA's former lead petitioner and executive director, Catherine Scott, has withdrawn from the charter. SBA's proposed program of integrated core course content and CDE CTE standards require the necessary background to ensure successful implementation of that program. Petitioners have not indicated who will serve as the school's executive director. The CDE also reviewed the claims of procedural violations. SBA alleges that there are procedural violations and that each violation constitutes an abuse of discretion. Ed Code Section four seven six oh five K two E requires the State Board of Education to determine whether the districts and counties' decisions to deny the SBA petition in totality constitute an abuse of discretion. The CDE does not find that the procedural violations alleged give rise to a determination that there was an abuse of discretion. Equivalent time and procedures, and so these are the alleged violations submitted by SBA. Ed Code Section seven four seven six oh five B states, "At the public hearing at which the governing board of the school district will either grant or deny the charter, petitioners shall have equivalent time and procedures to present evidence and testimony to respond to the staff recommendations and findings." SBA did not meet their burden of showing how the district did not provide equivalent time and procedures. For example, the district staff asked petitioners if ten minutes were enough for petitioners' presentation, and petitioners agreed. And all this can be found in the documentary record in the pages that are listed. Petitioners presented for approximately eleven minutes. District staff and legal counsel presented approximately twenty-six minutes. However, district staff did not limit petitioners' time. The district board members deliberated and heard answers to their questions of district staff and legal counsel. Neither NHUHSD nor HCBOE produced a written transcript. However, SBA has not made any claims indicating how the absence of a transcript impacted the district or county's denial of SBA's petition. After reviewing the complete documentary record and supporting documentation submitted by the parties to this appeal, the CDE has determined that neither the eight the NHUHSD nor HCBOE abused their discretion in reaching their decisions to deny SBA's charter petition. Therefore, the CDE recommends the SBE affirm NHUHSD's and HCBOE's decisions to deny SBA's charter petition. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. We're going to open the public hearing. I hereby open the public hearing at nine fifty-five AM. We will hear first from petitioners representing Samoa Beach Academy Charter School. They will have twelve minutes to make their presentation. We will then hear from Northern Humboldt Union High School and the Humboldt County Office of Education, who denied the charter appeal. They will have twelve minutes to make their presentation. We will, um, the district and county will have a combined total of twelve minutes, to be clear. After the presentation, we'll open up the phone line for public comment from individuals who are not part of the presentation. Uh, the petitioner may begin. You have twelve minutes.
Our video has been turned off.
I guess we need to ask the folks who are managing the technology to turn you on.
Thank you.
You're on.
Okay, thank you very much. Good morning, President Darling Hammond and board members. My name is David Lawn, and I am the lead petitioner and a board member for the Samoa Beach Academy. As a career educator, I've spent close to four years in education in various roles from classified positions as an instructional aide and custodian to a certificated positions as a teacher, athletic director, coach, and administrator, including as an assistant superintendent in the Northern Humboldt Union High School District. I currently am working in education as an administrative coach, helping educators complete their administrative credential. I'm so pleased to be a part of the extremely well-qualified petitioning team behind the proposed charters. Charter school that we are supporting. Samoa Beach Academy will bring much-needed full-time CTE programs to Humboldt County that will accommodate the needs of so many students in our area. SBA is focused on individual students. Janelle, I think you can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. Um, as we will be a small high school with small class sizes. SBA will offer three CTE pathways, including residential and commercial construction, patient care, and business management. SBA is committed to career skills and financial literacy with internship opportunities and required required courses. Finally, SBA will offer both college and career-bound programs, allowing students to meet A to G requirements and CTE coursework. Now, we'd like to hand over our presentation to our legal counsel. We feel this is important due to the legal changes and how the state considers charter appeals.
Thank you, Dave, and good morning, Board President Darling Hammond, board members. My name is Janelle Rulli. I'm an attorney with the Law Offices of Young, Minion Corp. I'm certain that you're going to hear a lot today about the importance of your vote, and I will lend my voice to that chorus. I can assure you that a lot of folks, including a lot of lawyers, are going to be paying attention to today's outcome. As we work through the issues, I know that we will all be mindful of precedent. We ask you today to determine that the district and county abused their discretion in denying the Samoa Beach Academy charter and to therefore reverse those denial decisions. We ask that you take action to guard the protections that we want in the law. We ask that you ensure meaningful appeals. I am so proud to represent Samoa Beach Academy. The team behind this charter petition is full of committed business owners, volunteers, and educators who are passionate about increasing choice for students and creating a viable work, a career path for them. This part of the state is desperately in need of trained workers. I have no doubt Samoa can deliver them. This is a charter school that will succeed. So this morning, we'll talk about defining abuse of discretion, the role of the state board, and then applying the definition to Samoa Beach. First up, defining abuse of discretion. It's important to have a definition so that we know what it is that we're aiming for. We know what our target is. Without a definition, we just don't even know where to begin. So as we've heard, this, uh, this term is not defined in the Ed Code, the Charter Schools Act. We don't have regulations yet in this area. So we look to statute and case law. Samoa Beach is proposing a definition that comes from the Code of Civil Procedure, as well as case law, that an abuse of discretion is established when the agency, one, has not proceeded in a manner required by law; two, the order or decision is not supported by the findings; or, three, the findings are not supported by evidence. So the or is important there, and I'll come back to that a little later. The CDE's definition, also up on the screen, has five prongs: arbitrary, capricious, entirely lacking in evidentiary support, unlawful, or procedurally unfair. Again, that definition also includes an or. So in practical terms, we don't see these two definitions as as very far off from one another. So we're not here today to argue against the CDE's proposed definition. In fact, there really is some clear overlap between the two definitions, between the standards, um, and the prongs that are at issue for Samoa are precisely the ones that are overlapping, that they're in the middle. So I mentioned the or in the two different standards. Having an or legally makes the definitions disjunctive. That means that we only need one of those prongs to be triggered in order to find an abuse of discretion. The district, for example, has to only be arbitrary or capricious, or entirely lacking in evidentiary support, or unlawful, or procedurally unfair. We only need one of those five prongs. What Samoa is here to show you is that the unlawful prong was triggered, both by the district and the county. I want to be clear about this. An unlawful act is an abuse of discretion. An unlawful act is an abuse of discretion. We'll demonstrate five different unlawful acts in this case. You may hear, uh, from others to that that just procedure, or mere procedure, or only procedure is somehow not a violation of law. Um, I, I heard that myself from the CDE. You might also hear that a minor violation of law can simply be shrugged away, but this is untrue. When AB fifteen oh five became law, it enshrined several new protections for charter petitioners in statute. They're all plainly written with no need for interpretation. These provisions must be protected today. Now, I'm not a criminal lawyer, but I did take criminal law and evidence classes in law school, where we talked a lot about a concept called the fruit of the poisonous tree. This concept is evocative. If the government or prosecutor does not observe all procedural rights during an investigation, then the results of that investigation, evidence, tips, confession, all of those things are forever tainted. They cannot be relied upon for a conviction. If the tree is poisoned, the fruit that comes from it is poisoned. This concept is echoed in civil law. If a school district or charter school governing board posts the agenda for their regular meeting only seventy-one hours in advance, the entire meeting is unlawful under the Brown Act. Any actions taken in that meeting would be void. No one would argue with a straight face that seventy-two hours is really just a minor provision of the Brown Act. Even this appeal you heard from CDE, if we hadn't gotten this appeal in timely, we wouldn't be here before you today. These things have to make a difference. They have to matter. So CDE's approach appears to be the exact opposite, where if they find just one piece of fruit from that tree is ripe, then the whole tree must be healthy, and nothing else matters. So we, we argue again the opposite. Procedural protections are vital to citizens and entities. They're enshrined in statute, just like the ones that we're talking about this morning, and they cannot be dismissed as just procedural protections. These are laws, and the meaning behind them has to, has to be there. So the role of the state board, um, you've heard that it's different. You're, you're experiencing now that it's different. State board no longer gets to review a charter with fresh eyes, uh, making its own findings around educational soundness, reasonably comprehensive, um, and the other standards that you're used to. Now, the state board's role is limited to evaluating whether the district or county, or both, abuse their discretion in denying the charter. That means that we're confined to the underlying record. The state board is more like an umpire now, rather than a trier of fact. In that umpire role, the board is bound to follow the law and to reverse the, reverse the denials if it finds abuse of discretion. So the CDE, they actually did conclude that this, that the district and county violated the law. That was in some of their, uh, their findings in their report. Inexplicably, though, they've decided that violating the law is not sufficient for meeting the unlawful prong. The CDE appears to conclude again that if there is at least one element of factual accuracy in the denials, some good fruit, then there must, there could not possibly be an abuse of discretion, no matter how many other laws were violated. This approach, taken to its logical conclusion, means that virtually no charter appeal, appeal will ever result in reversal if there is even one shred of legal accuracy in the record. We're asking you today to act independently and reverse these denials. If you don't, it will be a death knell to the procedural protections for charter petitioners that are written into statute. If you do not reverse here with clearly legal violations, no school district or county anywhere in the state, anytime, will follow any of these requirements. There simply won't be any consequences for not following them. Okay, so what are these abuses? The first abuse- The first abuse is that the district did not comply with the equal time guarantees during the decision meeting. Samoa got about eleven minutes to, um, to present, and the district staff and council took thirty-one minutes, nearly three times as long. You've heard that Samoa only asked for ten minutes. That's true. We got an open-ended question. How long do you think you need? We said ten minutes because that's what's most common. It was on the district to conform to what we said. If we said ten minutes and we took ten minutes, then they needed to limit themselves to ten minutes. They didn't do that. The law says equal time. Samoa didn't get in. Therefore, there's an abuse of discretion. Abuse number two, the district, uh, failed to comply with equal, um, equal procedure, equivalent procedure guarantees as well. They never posted Samoa's response to the, to the staff report with their meeting agenda. If we don't have any belief or expectation that's, that the district board members read our responses, but they did read the staff report, which was posted with the agenda, there's no way that, that we can know that we had equivalent procedures. And if the district didn't read our responses, of course, their decision was prejudiced. Abuse number three, the district and county each failed to comply with the legal requirement to prepare a transcript. The CDE is trying to say that it doesn't matter that there's no transcript, but it does. The ACCS almost derailed this whole thing. There were commissioners from the ACCS who wanted to throw out the entire appeal because there was no transcript, because they see this like an expulsion appeal. And if there's no transcript on an expulsion appeal, you have no idea whether or not the underlying, um, triers of fact actually followed what the law was. So the transcript is extremely important. And the CDE made a, a decree that a transcript can be a video, but it's just simply not true. A video, a transcript can be made from a video, but a video is not a transcript. A transcript is a writing. It's something you can print out and put in a binder and read. So not having the transcript merely derailed this appeal. The fourth abuse of discretion is that the county board made up and out of thin air a new reason for denial and then denied the charter because of that. We simply don't have a requirement to, uh, to gather new signatures at the appeal stage. The CDE found that this was a violation as well. And then last, abuse number five, um, if somehow I haven't convinced you about procedure, and I, I hope that I have. Many of the district's findings, many of the county's findings, the CDE independently found, had actually no merit to them. And without any merit, without being based on facts or law, those findings, uh, were not sufficient to deny the charter. So just some examples. Um, these are findings that were not supported, that the charter school will provide superior, uh, inferior CTE, that online instruction is not high-quality, that recruitment of teachers would be a barrier to success, that the school has not accounted for special ed services, needs to hire more than one special ed teacher, uh, that there are four CTE programs in the district that are thriving, and it's unlikely that...
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
President Darling Hammond, I apologize. I think you're on mute.
We are now going to hear from the Northern Humboldt Union High School and Humboldt County Office of Education for a combined twelve minutes.
Hi, good morning, State Board of Education. My name is Jennifer Nix. I'm the attorney representing the Humboldt County Board of Education, as well as the Humboldt County Office of Education. I'm here today with the Humboldt County Superintendent of Schools, Michael Davies Hughes, on behalf of both the Northern Humboldt Union High School District and the Humboldt County Board of Education, to ask you to affirm the denials of this charter petition. The SBA petitioners were denied a charter school because two different local boards found that the program the petition seeks to provide will be a detriment to children, is financially unviable, and will funnel a significant amount of public funds to a private company. The Northern Humboldt High School District and the Humboldt County Board of Education did not make this decision quickly or lightly. Instead, they had staff conduct thorough reviews of the petition, including meeting with the petitioners and researching all of the claims in the petition. Both boards held separate public hearings, two separate public hearings, with extensive public input at each meeting prior to making their decisions. SBA wants to make this appeal about alleged minor issues in the process. However, minor procedural hiccups in a charter school process cannot override the fact that this school would be harmful to the students of Humboldt County, even if the petitioners found a way to make it financially viable. Now, you've, uh, of course, you all know that AB fifteen oh five changed the standard for appeals and how you review appeals. Um, that change of standard was designed to emphasize local control over decision-making with regard to charter school petitions and to put in place a system where those local decisions were not overturned unless the local school district and the county board were both derelict in their duties under the law. CDE has recommended that you define abuse of discretion as arbitrary, capricious, entirely lacking in evidentiary support, unlawful, or procedurally unfair. We, the LEAs, agree with that definition because it is the definition that courts have been applying to review school district decisions with regard to charter schools for many years now. However, regardless of the definition that you choose for abuse of discretion, SBA did not and cannot show that there was an abuse of discretion here by either LEA, much less both of them. The record is clear that both LEAs acted in a reasonable manner. Both LEAs supported their decisions with lengthy factual findings citing to the record, and any procedural concerns, uh, either are not grounded in what's required in the law or did not cause harm to the petitioners. Northern Humboldt based their decision to deny SBA's charter on two findings. First, that the charter school presented an unsound educational program for the students enrolled in the charter school. And second, that the petitioners were demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program set forth in the petition. They supported that decision with twelve pages of findings. Notable in those findings are that the CTE program that the petition describes would be understaffed and would rely too heavily on an online curriculum. Additionally, the budget was not accurate and relied on incorrect assumptions, including, uh, the fact that it did not reflect an understanding of the programming or costs related to students with disabilities. And you're going to hear that that was a significant concern from the school board, in part because Humboldt County has one of the highest percentages of students with disabilities in the state. The Humboldt County Board of Education based their decision to deny SBA's charter on three findings. Uh, first, that the charter school presented an unsound educational program, that the petitioners were demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program, and additionally, that the petition did not contain the number of required signatures. Now, similarly to the district, the county board had concerns with regard to the CTE program, um, with regard to the petitioner's ability to implement an integrated CTE program, and with regard to the staffing, which was unrealistic in concept because it relied on a number of part-time teachers, and in reality, uh, because of a county-wide CTE teacher shortage. Additionally, uh, the county board was concerned that the budget was inaccurate and relied on incorrect assumptions. Similar concerns were raised by the county board with regard to the petition's, uh, information regarding supports for students with disabilities, students with social emotional deficits, and the budget to provide supports to those individuals. The county board also raised two additional concerns. First is that the petition identified a location or a facility that SBA intended to lease that cannot be contracted with, without running afoul of Government Code Section 1090 due to significant conflicts of interest with the building's owner and the Samoa Beach Academy. The proposed lease, moreover, reflects a gross misuse of public funds as it would funnel almost $2.7 million to a private company within the first five years of SBA's existence. That lease reflects a, a space that has a cost far in excess of the facilities of any other charter school within Humboldt County. The square foot cost in year five would be almost $35 per square foot, whereas the, the maximum cost any other charter school in Humboldt County is paying for a leased facility is $1.10 per square foot, almost thirty-five times the rent. Additionally, the county board found that the petition did not contain the required signatures. The petition was required to have four signatures from four meaningfully interested teachers. The county office of education contacted the four individuals who were listed. Well, three of them. One of them did not have a phone number. Only one of them was actually interested in teaching at SBA, and that individual does not hold a California teaching credential. One individual indicated he had been interested in teaching at SBA, but was no longer interested. One individual indicated that he was never interested in teaching at SBA and that he had misunderstood what his signature meant. To be clear, when the county board found that the petition did not contain the required signatures, they were looking at the signatures on the face of the petition, not at any additional requirement. County office staff did acknowledge the passage of time as permitted by the education code and permit petitioners to provide additional signatures, but they chose not to do so. The LEAs both issued extensive factual findings that cannot be said to be entirely lacking in evidentiary support. They also can't be said to not, uh, not reflect substantial evidence supporting their decision. So turning to the procedural violations that are alleged, SBA can't point to any procedural error that actually rises to an abuse of discretion because minor procedural errors do not rise to an abuse of discretion. The LEAs are requesting that the SBA affirm the denial of the charter petition unless there are significant issues regarding the review and appeal process at the local level. To adopt SBA's argument that any procedural error would require the SBE to grant the charter petition would result in petitions that are substantively deficient, like this one, being granted. This likely would cause SBE to grant more appeals than before AB fifteen oh five was enacted, which is clearly contradictory to the legislative intent. So I want to talk about the alleged procedural violations. The procedure in the code requires equal time and procedures, and that was given to the petitioners. Um, the, the school district, Northern Humboldt Union High School District, did produce a transcript on appeal. Second, um, there's concerns raised that the response to the staff findings was not properly provided to the board, but SBA actually provided that response directly to the school board members via email. Finally, there are concerns raised with regard to equal time. However, as you heard Ms. Rulie admit, the SBA petitioners were offered as much time as they wanted to present. They requested ten minutes. They took eleven minutes. And they never requested more time, even when the school district took additional time. Importantly, none of these allegations of procedural unfairness against the district are tied to any alleged harm. They simply present these allegations and ask for the deficient charter petition to be granted because of these procedural concerns that did not cause any harm. With regard to the county board of education, Ms. Rulie is correct that the county board did not record the board meeting at which the SBA petition was denied. However, that requirement is not in the code. Education Code, Section 47605, Subdivision B, provides the procedural requirements that the school district and the county have to follow with regard to charter school petitions and reviewing those petitions. That, that code section does not require that the meetings be recorded. Um, now, if you look down further in the code, when you get to the section with regard to appeal to the SBE, uh, it does note that there should be a transcript provided with the documentary record. But in every other code section in which a public meeting is required to be, to be recorded, the code explicitly states that it has to be recorded. So here we have a code section that is unclear at best. Regardless, SBA does not allege any harm that occurred because the meeting was not recorded. The harm that we would be looking for in this situation would be that you, the SBE, are not able to review something that happened at the meeting that was erroneous or that was unlawful. However, there's been no allegation that the county board of education did anything that was erroneous or unlawful in that meeting, just that they failed to actually record it. Accordingly, we, the LEAs, are requesting that you find that neither LEA abused their discretion and that you affirm the decision to deny this charter petition. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Davies Hughes to conclude.
President Darling Hammond, members of the board. My name is Michael Davies Hughes. I'm the Superintendent of Schools for Humboldt County. We want to conclude by stating that Humboldt County is home to many successful charter schools and thriving CTE programs. Indeed, both the Northern Humboldt High School District and the Humboldt County Office of Education are authorizers of charter schools, and we recognize the positive ways in which they support the diverse needs of students we serve. However, the Samoa Beach Academy charter petition falls short of the standards we expect for charter schools in Humboldt County, and therefore, we cannot support its establishment. We thank you for your thoughtful consideration, and I ask that you take action to adopt the recommendations to CDE and affirm the denials of both the district and the county board of education.
Thank you, uh, very much. At this point, I think we want to open the phone line for public comment. Uh, is, is the public comment, uh, slide up? Great. I see it. Public comment, uh, there we go. Public comment is limited to one minute. It's for people who are not part of either presentation. Members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item may do so by calling the telephone number and using the access code provided on the slide that is shown now. Uh, as we, uh, listen for public comment, we encourage you to please state your name and affiliation for the record. Please remember to turn down the speaker volume of your computer if you are following the live feed. Speakers will be limited to a minute each. Are there any public comments?
Uh, yes, we have a number of callers in the queue. I will open the phone line now.
Thank you.
Good morning. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, I'm Dr. Fred Van Fleck, and I'm in my eleventh year as a superintendent of Eureka City Schools. Eureka City Schools is a proud sponsor of other independent charter schools, and we are not anti-charter. I'm a former career and technical education teacher myself, and I understand quality CTE programs. I am a graduate of the NHU HSD and a native to the North Coast. I'm a state-certified business official and a former assistant superintendent of business services where I successfully led a district through the Great Recession. My concern is the fiscal solvency of the SBA charter. The worst thing that can happen for students is if they open, start educating students, and they close, leaving students deeply impacted. This charter is not set up for fiscal success. Bottom line, Eureka High School has over half of its 1,200-student population enrolled in a high-quality CTE program taught by highly qualified and credentialed CTE teachers, including a brand-new, over $7-million CTE facility. While the SBA charter is a fine concept, the reality of the fiscal solvency is a dream. Please support the recommendation of the CDE staff to affirm the local decision of the district and county boards of education, who know our community needs best.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Aricea Salisbury. I am clerk to the board of the Northern Humboldt Union High School District. Um, I'm proud to, uh, be here with our history of authorizing three charter schools and our devotion to career technical education. And I believe when I voted, and still believe, that it is in the best interest of students and families in our region to deny the approval of SBA. As a board member, and I'm aware this is true of my colleagues as well, I reviewed hundreds of pages of documents, including the petition, the district staff's recommended findings, and SBA's response to the district's initial findings, which SBA emailed directly to us. Um, we listened carefully to SBA's presentations, first of its with initial withdrawn petition, and then its second, similar petition, which is before you now, when we voted to deny. Um, and while the concept of SBA may be laudable aspirationally, my deeper review of the budget and petition revealed too many concerning gaps in experience and preparation for us to responsibly allow it to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Okay, thank you very much. This is former Governor Jerry Brown. Uh, my essential point here is the great difficulty that fifteen oh five has now created. Your role in reviewing, uh, the very important arguments that both sides can make is now foreclosed and limited by this very legalistic term, abuse of discretion. Uh, the result, I'm afraid, is the continuing denial of all new charters and massive rejection of charter renewals statewide. So I'm going to ask you, as you make this determination, to make very clear the inadequacy of this standard review. You ought to look at the merits, hear both sides, and be able to make a substantive decision, not engage in these very legalistic, uh, back and forth. Uh, charter schools play an important role, as do, uh, our public school system. I think we have an unfortunate law, and the legislature ought to be modifying it so we can be fair. it so we can be fair, uh, to the public schools and the charter schools that so many enthusiastic citizens, uh, want to create. That's my point. It's a very, uh, tough situation that you're now put in because the law does not allow you to make a full review. You're limited to finding basically legal nitpicking. Is the law, uh, following exactly or not? That's not the way to run a railroad, and I hope this board will fully probe into what is the situation on review. That very American, uh, fundamental right that no decision at, at a local level can never be reviewed at a higher level. That's a, a very un-American approach, but there it is, and only the legislature can change it. But this school board can illuminate the issues at stake and can be vigilant in, uh, protecting our public schools and the very creative charter schools that the law makes available, or at least used to make available. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Governor Brown. Uh, next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
This is Leif Gill. I am the chapter consultant of the Northern Humboldt High School Teachers' Association and the Eureka Teachers' Association. I support the CDE staff recommendation to affirm the Northern Humboldt School Board and Humboldt County Board of Ed denials of the charter petition for the Samoa Beach Academy. Both the district and the county had strong reasons to deny that were well-founded. Humboldt County is in long-term declining enrollment. The elementary school in Samoa uses only a fraction of its classrooms. Eureka City Schools has closed several elementary sites and has lost about 40% of its enrollment over the last few decades. Most secondary schools in the county have shrunk over the past 20 years. There is no demand for new schools. Samoa Beach Academy's budget for staffing is insufficient to attract and retain qualified teachers from existing schools to switch. It is also insufficient to compete with private industry for people with a necessary background and qualifications as CTE teachers. The existing high schools in the area, Eureka High and Arcata High, have invested millions of dollars in facilities and offer locally competitive wages and benefits packages. Even so, Eureka High School is losing CTE teachers.
Thank you, caller. Your time is up.
... employers.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning, President Darling Hammond and esteemed board members. My name is Gina Plake from the California Charter Schools Association. We appreciate the care that the department put into coming up with a definition for abusive discretion using existing statutes. However, we're very concerned that the department clearly acknowledged that the district and county violated the law, as you've heard in the presentation, but then also stated that the actions of the district and county were not unlawful. We cannot undermine some of the core tenets of AB 1505 in ensuring a fair process for charter approval by allowing a violation of law around process to be acceptable. Any violation by a district or county of process, step forth, and statute is unlawful and a clear abuse of discretion. Therefore, we respectfully request that you overturn the lawful decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Uh, my name is Tom McMahon. I'm the president of the Humboldt County School Board, and I'm a retired educator with 27 years of experience at all of it in Humboldt County. My decision to deny the appeal by Samoa Bay Academy was based on my thorough review of the documents submitted, my consideration of substantial public input, and the presentations offered by both parties during the public hearings. I'm an avid supporter of quality career technical education for the students and our community, but I would, could not support the model and plan presented by Samoa Beach Academy. My concerns were the model didn't present a sound education program for all students, especially those with special needs and the underprivileged. Program has, uh, was highly unlikely to be successfully implemented due to unrealistic enrollment projections and accompanying budget projections, and the lack of ability of specialized credential teachers to fill the anticipated need for full staffing. Thank you for your time and careful consideration of this matter.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Seva Corderman. I'm a fifth-generation resident and business owner of Humboldt County. I support the Samoa Beach Academy for many reasons. First, with Cal Poly set to add 10,000 students in the following years, Humboldt does need more schools. With the additions of students, professors, and families, who is going to build the housing and work in our hospitals? SBA will ensure their education directly ties into career readiness preparation. Second, as a business owner who works directly with these businesses in the trade, I know the businesses end up teaching everything on the job or hiring workers from out of the area who have experience. Workers with skill, confidence, and mindfulness in these trades are safer. Third, this charter proposal, uh, represents a unique public-private partnership, and we need more innovation like this in Humboldt County. I hope the state sees that because if you don't, we are failing our community and kids. Lastly, I fully, I have full confidence in the board. Every single person on the board and behind the scenes brings experience, confidence, and a work ethic to accomplish the untouchable.
Thank you, caller.
You know, fighting for our kids.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Teresa Grosjean, and I am the president of the Northern Humboldt Union High School District Board of Trustees. I sent public comment to the State Board of Education on July 7th. In that letter, I detailed dates of hearings and receipts of documents that I received in preparation of voting on SBA's charter petition. I also detailed the many factors that I considered and the rationale I used in voting to deny. Today, I want to reiterate that SBA had ample time to present information to our board. They received the amount of time they asked for, that I had thoroughly, on multiple occasions, read all the materials they provided to us, including their petition and response to our district's findings. I listened to all public comment made for and against approval and carefully considered their petition. In the end, based on nearly nine years of serving as a board member in my community, and what I know to be true about the needs of the students in our district, I was convinced by the evidence that SBA had not created a sound educational program and would be unable to adequately serve the students of Humboldt County, and that it was demonstrable.
Thank you, caller.
... be successful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Go ahead, caller. You are live. I'm sorry, we can barely hear you. Would you mind calling back in? Thank you very much.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, we can hear you now.
Yeah, I'm a long-term resident of Humboldt County, and I support Samoa Beach Academy. The main reason I'm supporting it today is, uh, we, we were constantly asking our, um, citizens in our local communities to step up and take a bigger role and responsibility, and not only in our school systems, but in our local government and how we conduct ourselves. Uh, this is a perfect example of citizens and people stepping up, putting in not only, um, a lot of money and effort and blood and sweat and tears into creating a better education system for our children. Um, that is the main reason why I'm supporting Samoa Beach Academy.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning, board members. My name is Cindy Vickers. I am the Director of Fiscal Services for Northern Humboldt Union High School District and have been in that role for the past 11 years. I reviewed the budget portion of the Samoa Beach charter petition as a member of the district's review team. I had significant concerns about the fiscal sustainability of SBA. The startup funding source cited is Charter Asset Management. This company advances funds to the school with payback coming from future state aid. State aid is driven by enrollment and ADA. The enrollment projections were unrealistic, which would jeopardize the ability of the SBA to pay back the funding. The petition states they will provide food service, but does not budget for food service staffing. There is no transportation budgeted, further reducing ADA potential and not accounting for legally mandated transportation for special ed students. There is no budget for special ed paraprofessionals, although the petition says they will employ paraprofessionals. The budgeted cash balance at the end of year one is approximately $16,000. Given the omission of costs associated with food service, transportation, and special ed coupled with the unrealistic enrollment projection, $16,000 is inadequate to sustain SBA beyond even year one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Colby Smart, and I am the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services at HCOE. I would like to comment on the process that we went through in reviewing SBA's petition. First, we conducted a de novo review. There were 17 members of the HCOE staff who carefully reviewed the petition from their own particular domain, uh, domain of expertise, including curriculum instruction, CTE, special education, MTSS, fiscal, facilities, and charter oversight. The findings of the Humboldt County Office of Education are based on an exhaustive review by staff who have decades of experience in education. HCOE has a tradition of supporting CTE and charter schools. HCOE staff's findings reflect deep structural deficiencies in the petition. We were tasked with reviewing the petition itself, and although there is merit in SBA's concept and vision, our findings expose significant and concerning flaws. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. You have one minute.
My name is Don Ramora, Council for Northern Humboldt Union High School District. I would like to respond to the following claims by SBA of alleged procedural errors by the district. Two are complete misrepresentations. Regarding the alleged lack of a transcript, prior to providing SBA with a video transcript, the district verified with Sandy Ridge at CDE that a video transcript was sufficient. This email exchange is in the record. See page 487, and SBA has it. Secondly, regarding the alleged failure to provide SBA's response to the district's findings, that's not even an illegal requirement. Furthermore, SBA emailed its response to the board members, as you've heard today. About the alleged lack of equitable time, the difference in time is de minimis, and SBA has identified no harm caused. SBA presented to the board three times by the end of the final meeting. Any minor procedural deviations in time was more than made up for by the two public hearings prior to the final meeting, plus the 25 minutes of public comment in favor of SBA at the final meeting. Thank you, honorable members of the board.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning, Madam President and members. My name is Chris Myers, and on behalf of the California School Employees Association, we are urging the board to affirm the decisions of the Northern Humboldt Union High School District and the Humboldt County Board of Education to deny this Samoa Beach Academy charter petition. CSCE agrees with the CDA, CDE staff recommendation, which concluded that neither LEA abused its discretion in denying the petition. It's abundantly clear, based on the records before you, that both LEAs made well-reasoned decisions to deny the petition after fairly evaluating the petition, consulting qualified experts, comparing relevant data, and calling upon their own expertise. Even in the event of a minor procedural error, it should not then follow that the LEA's decision be reversed and the petition granted. The LEAs acted within the letter of the law and completed their due diligence in fairly evaluating the petition. Therefore, we are due to affirm the LEA's decision to deny the charter petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Rob Flint, and, uh, I, I've lived in Arcata since 1984. Uh, I've been in the trade since 1987, when I took my gap year from college. I support the Samoa Beach Academy because it's the type of education that would have benefited me. I think the public schools here are good, but I don't think that they're good for everybody, and there's enough people who would benefit from a trades-based education. It would be a great symbiotic relationship. Uh, the trades could use the, you know, uh, an influx of youth with a baseline of knowledge, and, uh, and I think the students would benefit from having a relevant education for them, you know, where they see the end game and they see the benefit of what they're learning. And I, I also think that choice is a positive thing, and competition is a positive thing, too. And I, I, the, the local high school district would, would benefit from the competition as well. It makes everybody better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Steve Rodhag, and I run the Danco Cabinet Shop. Um, I'm calling to support the Samoa Beach Academy. As someone that hires the employees that these schools put out, calling their education anything but mediocre is a gross overstatement. My best employees were so disgruntled with school that they dropped out. A school like this can reach children and make them want to go to school. If I had this, I would have been so much better off than I wa, am now. These are high-paying jobs that these children can get right out of high school without going to college, with, without student debt. It will only help the underprivileged people of our community. And I feel so strongly about this. When this school is approved, I plan on getting my teacher's credential and teach there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Sheila Rocker-Heppe, and I serve on the Humboldt County Office for the, uh, the Humboldt County Board of Education as trustee representing Area 3. My professional background includes a decade of teaching eighth grade before serving as the coordinator of the Secondary Teacher Credential Program at what is now Cal Poly Humboldt, where I was a member of the School of Education Teaching Faculty for 14 years. My children attended four schools in Humboldt County for their elementary education, and two of those schools were charter schools. I reviewed the SBA proposal ver, very carefully. I concur with the findings from the Northern Humboldt School District and the County Office of Education staff. A particular concern is the quality and feasibility of the educational program and the lack of professionally qualified teachers interested in working at the charter school. Two years ago, I facilitated a countywide teacher shortage task force, which brought together leaders from districts, the university, local tribal education leaders, and the County Office of Education to seek solutions for our area. The SBA proposal fails to address or maybe fully understand important staffing and credentialing concerns facing our region.
Thank you, caller.
Additionally, I was significantly concerned.
Thank you, caller. Your time is up. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Tanya Trump. I am the Program Manager for Career and College Resources, employed by Humboldt County Office of Education. I consulted with Northern Humboldt Union High School District when they received a charter petition from SBA claiming SBA would provide a CTE medical pathway program. As I shared with council for the district, HCOE has been attempting to hire a qualified health science and medical technology sector CTE teacher since May of 2021. In June 2021, the position was posted in newspapers and other media, such as EdJoin and social media. This reached over 1,500 people with 49 engagements. In September 2021, HCOE posted the position again and paid to boost it on social media. Despite reaching nearly 1,900 people by October, we received only one applicant. This applicant pulled their application after hearing the salary ranges in this area. I am aware of two other large districts in this county who have been unable to recruit CTE-credentialed candidates for this pathway. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello, it's Eric Premack with the Charter Schools Development Center. I think the one thing that everybody agrees on today is that we don't have a definition of the key term abusive discretion. Uh, under any definition of that term, however, the underlying statutes matter. And in this case, the underlying statutes require the school districts to make specific factual findings pertinent to the school in question. And in this case, they failed to do that. We also question the findings of the CDE on procedural matters. We don't think they passed the Google test. For these and other reasons, we would urge you to reverse the district's denial and allow this school to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller ending in a...
Hello. Good morning, state board. Okay, thank you. Good morning, state board members. My name is Patty Campbell, and I'm the Chair of the Samoa Beach Academy Board. My name is Patty Campbell, and I'm the Chair of the Samoa Beach Academy Board. I'm a sixth-generation Humboldt County native, a local business owner, and a parent of three local high school graduates. We are seeking to offer a research-based career technical education school, which will directly prepare our students to go to work in the trades. This aspect is extremely important to me, as my family owns a lumber mill in Humboldt County, and we've experienced firsthand the dwindling pool of qualified applicants for jobs. With a public-private partnership opportunity in the trades like SBA will offer, I know that local businesses like mine will immediately employ those graduates. We have been on a very long road to seek approval of this charter, which is proof of the commitment of this team. We persevered after denials by the district and county and now ask you to reverse those denials because the district and county did not follow the law. Private citizens have to follow the law, and the same goes for government bodies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller with the last four digits, ending in 0866. You are live. Please start your public comment now.
Good morning, honorable board members. I'm Melanie Suzavilla, a member of the district's petition review team. I was in charge of special education for the district for five years and have seven years of training and experience in the development of multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS. I consulted with our CEPA director and our regional CTE specialist and personally spent more than 80 hours reviewing, investigating, and writing our findings based on the evidence. Two key concerns were: One, SBA understaffed special education did not adequately budget for related services such as a single paraprofessional or provide a continuum of placement options. I cannot emphasize enough how concerned I am for any students with IEPs attending SBA. And two, the petition items related to MTSS are largely summarized or copy-and-pasted text from the Internet. SBA has not outlined a development plan and does not have the experience to implement MTSS. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Larry Gonzalez, and I've been a Humboldt County resident for over 12 years. I came up here to go to Humboldt State University, graduated college, and upon graduating, I couldn't find work, decent job, so I joined the trades. Been there for eight years now, and I wish I could have attended a high school such as Samoa Beach Academy is proposing because I could have started a career in the trades a lot sooner, probably be a lot farther and advanced in my career now than I would have been if I had this opportunity. I just believe that Humboldt County is growing, and to continue growing, we have to grow the youth, and that's going to mean offering more career and technical education, because not everyone that graduates from a Humboldt County high school is going to go to college. It's a reality. We know it. If you look at the college rates now, you know, they're not, it's not like 90%. Not everyone's going to college. So I just feel that college is not for everyone, and giving an opportunity to get technical skills in high school is just priceless, and I just really love that we have an opportunity to innovate and get Humboldt County to be more competitive.
Thank you, caller. Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Oh, good morning, President Darlingham and honorable members of the board. I appreciate your service and thanks for having us here today. I'm Roger McDonald, the Superintendent of the Northern Humboldt Union High School District. To address one issue raised in the appeal, Dave Law, the petitioner, did not request any specific amount of time to present to our Board on the day it voted on the petition before you. I suggested 10 minutes. He agreed to it in an email, which is in evidence. He could have easily asked for more time, which we have readily granted. Today, with the charter petition, I created a district review team consisting of myself, the district's fiscal director, the district's expert in special education, multi-tiered systems of support, and Council for the district. This team consulted with the CEPA director, with our regional expert in CTE, with the regional charter directors, and with other Humboldt County superintendents who run CTE programs and who have engaged in dual enrollment with the two colleges that will listen to the petition. We also consulted with the following department leads at HCOE: Business Services, College and Career, and Personal Services. It was these individuals' expertise that informed our recommendations to deny the charter petition.
Thank you, caller.
There was no abuse of discretion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Charles Barnhart. Been a resident of Humboldt County for 55 years, and I've been in the trades for 38 years. I graduated from Eureka High School, and I wish I would have had an opportunity like the Samoa Beach Academy is presenting here. The trades have provided a tremendous living for my family. We pretty much wanted for nothing. My son struggled in high school, and I barely got him through. And then he went to a trade school in Arizona for audio engineering, flourished, top five in his class. He's a hands-on learner, which I know lots of kids are. He's now an audio engineer in Universal Studios. This type of program is much needed in Humboldt County, and I support the Samoa Beach Academy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
My name is Mandy Hu, and I'm a staff attorney with California Teachers Association. I'm responding to Samoa Beach Academy's definition of abusive discretion. Minor procedural errors that do not affect the outcome of the district or county's otherwise well-founded decisions to deny the petition should not be considered abusive discretion. To hold otherwise would be to flout the intention of AB 1505. That law significantly changed the role of the State Board in the charter process to ensure that the State Board could not approve charter petitions denied by district and counties unless there were significant issues regarding the review and appeal process at the local level. As Governor Brown recognized, this law restricts the State Board's scope of review. Under the new standards, the local decision is intact unless it's an abuse of discretion, and minor procedural errors do not meet the tie bar. Under Samoa Beach's reading, if a petitioner submits a flagrantly unlawful charter petition, for example, one that doesn't even describe the course of study, but the district or county fails to give literally the same amount of time to the petitioner as to others at the hearing, then the State Board would have to authorize a flagrantly unlawful petition.
Thank you, caller.
It's an absurd result, and it should not be the way the law is read. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. This is Claire Crawford with In the Public Interest. Despite assertions and previous comments, many new charter schools have already been authorized with AB 1505 in place, and the existence of the charter industry is not at stake today. The petitioner's interpretation of the law is absurd. When taken to its logical conclusion, a minor procedural error by a district would require the State Board to authorize any charter school despite being denied by two local elected bodies and regardless of how serious the findings. For instance, the scandalous A3 founders could petition a district and a county, and if the district's staff spoke for one minute longer than the charter petitioners, the SBE would be required to authorize the school. This is clearly not the legislative intent. CDE found no abuse of discretion. Two elected bodies made findings supported by facts to deny this petition, and the SBE should affirm their decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Caroline Neuhaus Wesley from Safira Education Associates, and I urge the Board to reverse the determination made by the governing boards of the district and the county because there is clearly an abuse of discretion. Anytime there is something that is procedurally unfair or not proceeding with law, that is an unlawful act, therefore, it is an abuse of discretion. You've heard a lot about staffing, food services, budget, and registrar, all of those, and special ed, all of those things are included in the budget. I think there is a clear misunderstanding of the review of the charter petition, as food services can be found in line 4700, janitorial services 5502, and registrar in 2400 of the budget. Special education is a huge concern, and to say that the school is demonstratively unlikely is unfair, and I urge you to not make a precedent-setting case, which would cause a massive rejection of new charters. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning, State Board of Education members. My name is Lorraine Richards, and I am a classroom teacher representing the California Teachers Association. A primary purpose of AB 1505 was to return control over charter school authorizing to local school districts. CTA supports the CDA staff's recommendation to deny the appeal of Samoa Beach Academy. As highlighted in the CSCE/CTA letter, minor procedural errors do not rise to the level of abuse of discretion, and both the district and the county had strong reasons to deny the petition that were well-founded. Abuse of discretion is a very high standard and meant to be extremely deferential to local decisions. We urge that the State Board of Education to affirm the school districts and counties' decision to deny the Samoa Beach Academy charter school petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller with the last four digits, 3599. You are live. Please start your public comment now.
I'm sorry, I think I'm on the wrong agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
This is Suzanne Kuya with the Charter Schools Development Center. Thank you, members of the Board, and thank you, Governor Brown. CTE programs are needed, and per ed code, the establishment of charter schools should be encouraged. So I'm confused why the intro slides only summarize the reasoning for the denial and didn't give an equivalent summary of rebuttals. The balance of the evidence must meet the legal standard: unsound program or demonstrably unlikely to succeed. These are high legal bars. Most of the denial findings, however, are speculative, not demonstrative. Longless the findings of this nature are typical, but it doesn't mean they'll materialize. Is there any specific substantive concern where the petitioners have been heard? The intro slides show that only the district staff got to respond to questions, not the petitioners, and that is not minor. We see an obvious abuse of discretion, and the SBE does have this discretion to determine what to do in this case, and we hope that they will give this school a chance to.
Thank you, caller.
CTE pathways.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for item number 17.
All right, I want to thank all of the public commenters. This is a complicated determination, and we appreciate all of the input. I am now going to close the public hearing at 10:55 a.m. We'll begin board discussion, and I'd like to ask our liaisons, Vice President Glover Woods and Member Olken, if they would like to make initial comments. Vice President Glover Woods?
Thank you, President Darlingham. Just some initial comments before we begin to engage in our discussion. We did have opportunity to hear during this public hearing, as well as through written documentation we received, a lot of comments regarding the benefits of CTE programs and even the desire to see more of those offerings in the proposed area. But I respectfully say to all of us that we are not charged with the review of the petition itself. What we are asked to do is to determine if there has been an abuse of discretion on behalf of the district and county office, and if so, decide accordingly from that point. Just to again lift up the definition that we've been provided regarding an abuse of discretion, one of many things would need to have occurred. So the definition we received was that an abuse of discretion would be that the actions of the district and county office were either arbitrary, capricious, lacking in evidentiary support, unlawful, or procedurally unfair. So again, we've got a lot of information. This is a very important conversation and discussion to have, but I just encourage us to anchor ourselves with what we have been charged to do as a board, which is to decide if there has been abuse of discretion on behalf of the district and, I'm sorry, the district and the county office, which has resulted in a denial of the charter petition.
Member Olken?
Thank you, Member Glover Woods, for that start, and certainly thank you to everyone who presented today, both formally and through public comment. This is a very meaty, complicated, and new thing for us to be deciding upon, and so I appreciate the reminder of what the new rules are and what our role is. I myself, as I was listening to the presentations and the public comment, spent most of the time trying to disentangle what felt like, which parts of what we were hearing were comments on the sort of, on the merits of the charter versus comments on the process that has happened thus far, because my understanding is we're looking at process rather than at the, we're not re-deciding whether this charter school is, whether it has merit as a school or not. That's not our role today. And so I spent most of the time trying to disentangle the comments myself. So I look forward to hearing our deliberation as we take this on. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now open for board discussion. If anyone has comments or questions that they would like to raise. Yes, Vice President Glover Woods?
I did have a clarifying question, and I'm not quite sure who should respond to it. As it relates to the public hearing and the difference in time, my question is, were the petitioners denied a request to present for more time after seeing that the district presented for longer than the time that had been requested by the petitioners? Because my understanding is the petitioners requested 10 minutes and presented for 11, then the district presented afterwards. Then seeing the difference in time, did the petitioners ask for more time? And if they did, were they denied that request?
Stephanie, are you available to answer that question?
Yes, I am. So the petitioners, as we understand it, and we, at the district level, we did watch the video, did not request more time. They were given, well, they were asked how much time they needed. They had said 10 minutes. That is illustrated in emails that are attached to the documentary record. At the actual hearing, they gave 11 minutes, as you noted, Member Glover Woods. They were not, they were not asked to stop their presentation, nor did we see them request more time during the hearing.
Any other questions or comments? Member Lewis?
Thank you, President Darlingham, and thank you, Vice President Glover Woods, and for your guidance and directing us to really stay focused on what our charge is here today and not try to comment on the merits of the actual petition. So I just want to just be clear about the response from the CDE response, the district and the county's response to the allegations. I just want to make sure that I heard things correctly and that I have it accurately. You've already asked the President, excuse me, Vice President Glover Woods already asked the question, clarifying question about the time. And the second allegation of the petitioners was that they did not get the opportunity, the Board didn't have the opportunity to receive their written response to the county and the district's findings. And I just want to make sure that I heard correctly that the SBA actually directly emailed their responses to the Board, and that's why their responses were not included with the Board agenda along with staff responses. Is that correct? I'm not sure who I'm asking, but one of the CDs.
I think Stephanie is the person we're asking at this moment, if she can provide that answer.
So the, there is no requirement in ed code for the district to post the petitioner's response to their findings. There is a requirement ed code that the district posts their findings 15 days before the public hearing to decide on the petition, but there is no requirement that the district post the charter's responses. From what I understand, and we can certainly ask them directly, but from what I understand from the documentary record and from the district, I believe, or the county attorney's response earlier, that the response from the charter petitioners was directly emailed to every board member prior to the hearing. So they did have the opportunity to review those, that response.
That is what we just heard.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And also, there was no, in the petitioner's allegation about they should not have been required to obtain new signatures, and I believe what I heard was that wasn't a requirement. It was merely the Board and the county because they had contacted the teacher, the four teachers who were listed in the petition, and there was no continued interest with them going, being a part of the academy, and they were merely asking for more, but there wasn't a requirement made to submit more. That affected the judgment of the county or the district. That wasn't a procedural violation. Just clarification, just making sure I'm reading that correctly, if I'm asking it correctly.
So I think that it was. So I, I think that it was, it was not clear in the documentary record. If you notice in our A1, we, we did not find the sufficient findings within the documentary record. I believe the county did answer that question during their testimony today, and we can certainly go back to them if, if they would like to answer that. But it seemed to be a real matter of best practice for the county in, in reaching out to those signature, teacher signature folks to find out if they were still interested, which is not prohibited by ed code, certainly.
Member Lewis, is that responsive to your question?
That's, it is responsive, and I really want to stay focused on, you know, whether or not it was abuse of discretion based on those, those categories that were described in the definition. So I believe it was answered sufficiently for, for my clarification. Thank you.
This is a reminder, oh, I'm sorry, President Hammond. I was just going to remind that the abuse of discretion standard really applies to the decision to deny and not the individual procedural errors that have been discussed here today. Your, your decision to find an abuse of discretion must be on the totality of the decision to deny.
Thank you.
Okay. Member Patilla Bronson, and then Member Olken.
So I wanted to start by thanking Vice President Glover Woods for the framing and the reminder of sort of what the, the changed standard of review, the more limited standard of review that we're looking at. And also for folks who are watching, that noticing that it is, it is quite a different standard of review than what we have undertaken before. I remember when 1505 was enacted, and I think the, it was, you know, described as the first major overhaul to the charter school law since its inception, and laws have consequences. I think the abuse of discretion standard is quite clear that it is a more limited review. So the, the conversation on the merits is a much more circumscribed form of review that we're undertaking. And I think CDE's analysis has been, I think, quite compelling around why on the merits there hasn't been an abuse of discretion. The, the procedural pieces, I think, and it was very helpful just to hear the totality of the circumstances description that was just provided. I, I did just want to ask around the, the piece on the transcript. I appreciate the clarification as to the time differential that was raised. And certainly I don't think equal time would mean, you know, leaving, for example, a 30-minute timer going just because the other side had presented for 30 minutes and not having asked for additional time, having been given as, as much time as, as the petitioner wanted to provide, I think is, is actually a pretty generous version of, of how the time could be allotted. I did want to just confirm that there's nothing in ed code that prohibits, however, a video transcript as being the official record.
Stephanie, can you respond to that?
I can. There, there is not anything in ed code, and I'm sure Judy Seis can, can weigh in if, if, if this is not correct, but there is nothing in ed code that prohibits a video being sent or being used as the transcript. I believe that the ed code states just transcript. It doesn't even state written transcript. So for the, for, for, for now, CDE has made the decision that a video transcript or a video is, is sufficient. For a transcript, we do ask that there be timing on the videos so that it can be cited to, but you, you are correct that ed code does not prohibit a video.
Judy, did you want to add anything?
Yes, Stephanie is correct. Ed code does not prohibit a video transcript. And there aren't, there are other agencies that accept video transcript in these types of hearings. And if the goal of the transcript is to allow the petitioners to have a record of what has occurred, the video with the timestamps seem to achieve the same result. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Olken?
Thank you. So I, I just first just wanted to, as, as we were talking about time and the, the differential in amount of time for presentations, one, one thing I've noted over the last couple of days is our very clear, each side gets 12 minutes. And so I just want to, while I, I, I don't believe that, I, I don't have any indication that that's a requirement in any way of law. It's an interesting way of looking at what equal time looks like. So just, I want to put that out there. And then the second thing is, you know, as, as somebody who leads charter school, two charter schools, I think, as I was listening to and reading through the concerns about the viability of Samoa Beach Academy, you know, there were pieces where I thought to myself, you know, in, in my world, I might very well be the person heating lunch. Because if the choice is, I'm going to put money into the classroom, or I'm going to put money into the heating of lunches, I guarantee you, I'm putting money in the classroom and, and I am heating lunches up. So there were quite a few examples of that in the concerns and in the, the, the reasons that the, that either the budget or the academic program were deemed unsound, where I thought through my lens, I, I'm not sure about that. Or I disagree. That said, I'm, I don't believe that that's the standard by which we're supposed to be deciding today. And so I, I appreciated Governor Brown's, former Governor Brown's comments about that being frustrating. And, and, and I appreciated him calling in to that effect. And so, so that part, you know, I just feel like it's important to put these things out here. And I think, and then that leads me to the second part, which is, AB 1505 was long, it was a long and collaborative and complicated process to get it passed. And I think in the charter school world, there was a sense that in exchange for what was definitely some dialing back of the onus for denial, like putting more responsibility on charter schools, put it that way, there were some procedural safeguards enacted that felt important because, you know, we see in schools all the time the importance of procedural safeguards. We see the importance of procedural safeguards for students going through their, the IEP process or through the disciplinary process. So these things matter. And so I was wondering if we could rehear from the department sort of why they believe that the, that the places where perhaps the process wasn't, I believe that they said there were a couple of places where the process wasn't followed entirely, but that they didn't raise to the level of abuse of discretion. I was wondering if we could rehear those, because that feels like a really key point to me in terms of being able to make a decision.
Thank you. I think we want to ask Stephanie and perhaps Judy to respond.
Thank you. I'm, I'm actually standing here with CDE's chief counsel, Amy Holloway, who would like to respond.
Thank you.
I can't see over the podium. Good afternoon, my name, or morning, good afternoon, Amy Holloway. I am now the deputy over of the Charter Schools Division. So normally, when we were in person, you'd see me at a desk and avoiding public comment. I feel compelled in this instance to give you some information, in particular in response to Member Olken's comments, which are well taken. I think that we need to make sure that the record is clear that what 47605 requires is equivalent time and procedure. It does not require equal. So equivalent should mean that it feels fair on the record about whether each side had appropriate and adequate opportunity to be heard. We haven't heard from SBA that they did not feel that they didn't have sufficient time or that they didn't ask for additional time. What they said was, we needed 10 minutes. So the district and the county, the district or the county in this instance should have been limited to 10 minutes. And that the questions that the board members had for the county should have been limited to the same number of questions or the same amount of time for SBA. As decision makers, think about how you would feel if your discretion were limited, that you had to ask each side the same number or types of questions. Now, there may be that SBA felt that if it had opportunities to answer questions, it could have presented additional information. But the record does not require, the statute does not require that the boards exercise their discretion in asking each side the same number of questions or have the same issues for each side. I also appreciate the Member Olken's comments about she did not agree in some cases, and I think that's going to be a very hard place for you all to be as well as, you know, in reviewing the decisions. But courts have made clear that in an abuse of discretion standard, you don't get to substitute your judgment for that of the trial or fact or the, the parties that heard that. And in fact, many of the lawsuits that we see against the state are from folks saying, we think you should have operated this program differently. Not that the law required it, but we think you should have done something. You should have exercised your discretion differently. So I think Member Olken's comments are helpful to locals about how they should be looking at these petitions when they come before them. And I, and it may be a good signal to the legislature that there is some needed amendments to the statute. I, I don't know, but I take, I take her comments to heart. And also wanted to mention that the staff around this item worked extremely hard, the charter school staff, legal staff, to make sure that they were implementing the statute as written, in spite of its, its areas where clarity would be of, of benefit. And lastly, with regard to the procedural safeguards, I don't, we, we take each case as it's presented. So in another case, the equivalent time might be more dramatic. It might have, have been imposed to limit the charter schools or the district or the county's ability to present the information that they felt that the board needed to make their decisions. That's not necessarily in the record. It's not in the record as presented to you today. And lastly, with regard to the transcript, if there was a, if an issue was raised about the manner in which the hearing was held and a transcript would demonstrate that and, and a charter petitioner is inhibited or barred in their ability to present that information, then this board could find that the failure to have a transcript was, was something that could be viewed in, against the, the local decision, and you could overturn that. But that's not the case here again. And, and the transcript itself does not constitute the decision that was before the local board. It doesn't, it documents it and the process that they use. So I don't want to minimize its importance. The statute does not require the districts to create, develop, or maintain a transcript. It says the districts and the counties shall produce a written record, including transcripts. And I know that's a point that's a little, little vague, but we don't impose obligations on local districts, local LEAs without express statutory authority for that. So, thank you.
And just to clarify, there was a video which is serving as the transcript. Is that correct?
Yes, from the district.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments? All right, I think if there are not additional questions or comments, we are probably ready for a, a motion. And I just would like to say, as we're thinking about the motion, just to reinforce that this is a complicated situation where we're asked to make a procedural determination, not based on the merits of the petition. I shared your view, Member Olken, that sometimes the standard that was applied was a standard of how would we do it in a traditional setting, not necessarily how might a, an innovative school, you know, approach particular elements of the, the program. So I think it's important for us just to, as Amy said, to be clear that that's not an expectation that we're, we're holding of the review of charges. But Governor Brown was right that this is a, the, the decision we make is, by legislative requirement, one that is really only about the procedural elements of this, not the merits of the petition itself. We're doing our due diligence and implementing the statute to the best of our ability. And unless we're finding that, for example, in the cases that Member Olken raised, that the decision was, quote, "entirely lacking in evidentiary support," which is the standard that we've been given, we will not be substituting our judgment for the judgment of the people who reviewed the petition. I do appreciate all the public comments and letters we've received on the issue. There's a heightened level of attention surrounding the action to be taken today because this is the first abuse of discretion appeal implementing AB 1505. I understand because it's a new process, there's been a significant shift in the board's role and authority. There may be a temptation for folks to speculate about future board actions based solely on this single appeal because it is the first one in line. And I do want to provide a caution about reading too much into today's, today's decision. Should we move to approve the department's recommendation, both the department and the board are taking a new charge very seriously. The analysis and the board's decision are based on the specific administrative record before us, the totality of the circumstances in this particular appeal. We have received a thorough analysis, I thank the CDE staff for that. And in the future, each petition and each administrative record will receive the same level of review and analysis. And the board will make a decision based on the totality of the particular circumstances involved. I don't want to discuss hypotheticals, but if we move to approve the department's recommendation, the action today should not be misconstrued as sending a message that we're not concerned about procedural issues or evidentiary issues, or that those issues might never serve as the basis for a determination that there has been an abuse of discretion. So with, with that framing, I'd like to see if we have someone who'd like to make a motion on this decision. Member Glover Woods?
Thank you, President Darling-Hammon, for that, for that framing. So with that being said, I do move that we affirm the CDE recommendation and affirm the decision to deny the SBA charter petition that was made by the district and the county office.
And do I have a second for that motion?
I second it.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion of the motion? Member Glover Woods, your hand is, okay, it's going down. Seeing no other discussion, I would ask Brooks to call the roll for the vote.
Member Rodriguez?
Aye.
Member Patilla Bronson?
Yes.
Member Orozco Gonzalez?
Yes.
Member Olken? Member McQuillan?
Aye.
Member Lewis? Member Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Escobedo.
Yes.
President Darling Hammond.
Yes.
Member Bananca.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And we'll now take a 15-minute break and return at 11:40. All right, welcome back, everyone. Board members, we need to reestablish the quorum, so Brooks is going to call the roll.
Member Rodriguez.
Here.
Member Patillo Brownson.
Here.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Here.
Member Olken.
Here.
Member McQuillan.
Here.
Member Lewis.
Here.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Here.
Member Escobedo.
Here.
President Darling Hammond.
Here.
Member Bananca.
Here.
If one's present, we have a quorum.
All right. So we're up to Item 8018, which is the Time Community School. Consider issuing a notice of violation pursuant to California Education Code 47607G. And this item will be presented by Stephanie. Stephanie, please begin.
Thank you. So Item Number 18, consideration of the issuance of a notice of violation to Time Community School pursuant to California Education Code Section 47607G. A little background on Time. The appeal to establish TCS was heard by the California State Board of Education at its July 9, 2020 meeting. At this meeting, the CDE recommended that the SBE deny the TCS petition. At its June 9, 2020 meeting, the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools did not agree with CDE's recommendation to deny the school, and instead voted to approve the TCS petition with a delay in opening for one year. The motion passed by a vote of seven to two. The SBE voted to approve the charter petition to establish Time for a term of five years effective July 1, 2020, with a delay in opening and starting instruction in the 2122 school year. That motion passed by 10 votes. At the same meeting, this SBE delegated oversight of Time Charter School to the Los Angeles County Board of Education pursuant to former Ed Code Section 47605K1. The Los Angeles County Board of Education delegated monitoring and oversight of TCS to the Los Angeles County Office of Education. Since March 2022, CDE and SBE staff have been in communication with LACO about LACO's concerns regarding the sustainability of Time Charter School. Due to the nature of the concerns, a recommendation to the State Board of Ed regarding the issuance of a notice of violation to TCS was discussed. At that time, LACO expressed their desire to continue collaborating and providing guidance to TCS, in the hopes of bringing the school into compliance and into a more stable fiscal position. The CDE and LACO believe that there is substantial evidence that TCS engaged in fiscal mismanagement, failed to meet or pursue any of the pupil outcomes identified in the charter petition, and committed a material violation of the conditions, standards, or procedures set forth in the charter petition. For the aforementioned reason, the CDE recommends that the SBE consider issuing a notice of violation to Time Charter School pursuant to Ed Code Section 47607G. And so now, President Darling Hammond, I am going to hand over the bulk of the presentation to the Los Angeles County Office of Education, Mr. Indra Chikarali, who is the Director Two of the Charter Schools Office for LACO. And as they have been conducting the oversight of Time, they will provide the board with the details of why we are asking the board to issue a notice of violation. Mr. Chikarali?
Great. Thank you so much. Let me go, and is that screen up for everybody to see?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Good morning, board members. As you know, Time Community School began instruction in July of 2021 within the boundaries of the Montebello Unified School District. In its first year of operation, Time planned to enroll 260 students in grades nine and 10. Prior to opening, the school submitted evidence of enrollment for 263 students. Despite this evidence, the school opened with only 27 students, and eventually enrolled a total of just 41 students by October, failing to enroll any additional students throughout the school year. Here you have the school's mission and operating entity presented to you on the screen in front of you. Give you a moment to read that. Since Time's authorization, LACO has taken many steps to support Time, including seven site visits by LACO staff, including the Charter School Office, Facilities Unit, and Los Angeles County Sopa, two comprehensive meetings with the Executive Director and members of the governing board, monthly fiscal monitoring, bi-weekly Zoom meetings with all authorized county charter schools, and regular meetings, calls, and emails with a LACO-assigned coordinator. Unfortunately, Time has been unwilling to implement much of the guidance offered by LACO staff, based on LACO's extensive experience with new charter schools. Therefore, despite this widespread support, LACO staff were prompted to send out two notifications of concern delivered to the Time Board on January 26 and June 28 of 2022. The following items were listed in the January 26 Notice of Concern. Time failed to demonstrate financial viability in the current and subsequent fiscal years due to its enrollment shortfall, deficit spending, potential cash deficiencies, reliance on debts, and a negative ending net position for the 2021-22 fiscal year. Time failed to demonstrate the implementation of ELD standards for long-term English learners as required by federal and state law. This population represents almost half the school's student body. Time failed to implement teacher credentialing requirements. And lastly, at the time of the LACO fall oversight visit, Time had not cured all required corrections from an initial facility inspection conducted on May 26, 2021. Time did, however, work with the Montebello Unified School District to eventually cure these remaining corrections. As previously mentioned, LACO sent Time a second notice of concern on June 28, based on the issues listed here. Each concern will be detailed in the slides to follow. First, both LACO and CDE staff found that the Time budget and multi-year projections are based on unrealistic enrollment projections. In addition, Time is fiscally insolvent for the current fiscal year, and also in the subsequent two fiscal years, due to unrealistic projections. This table before you here illustrates Time's unrealistic enrollment and ADA projections from its PENSEC report to fiscal year 2023-24. The proposed ADA increase in 2022-23 represents 185% increase from the 2021-22 enrollment. In addition, there is another 50% increase in 2023-24 for a two-year total increase of 120 ADA, or a 327% increase from 2021-22. This table here illustrates projected fiscal insolvency and includes the school's financial data submitted for fiscal year 2021-22 operation, including the budget, first and second interims, and actuels through May 31, 2022. Time ended May 31, 2022, with a structural deficit of negative $321,464, and an ending net position of negative $211,793. In addition, Time's reserves for economic uncertainties is a negative 21.7%. This slide illustrates the concerns of debt accumulation and cash flow projections. As of May 31, 2022, Time has a fund balance of negative $211,794, notes payable of $211,348 due to the Executive Director, and a loan owed to the California School Finance Authority for $100,000. Also, as of May 31, 2022, Time has a cash balance of $8,105, or three days of operating cash. For fiscal year 2022-23, the school plans to sell current and future receivables and access a California School Finance Authority revolving loan in the amount of $150,000. Cash flow projections reflect negative cash balances for six out of 12 months in 2022-23. Due to cash deficiencies and reliance on borrowing, Time may not be able to meet its obligations, including payroll expenses and related benefits. I would now like to hand the presentation over to my colleague, Dr. Darrell Brown, Coordinator Three with the Los Angeles County Office of Education, to review student academic outcomes.
Thank you, Indra. As the school has struggled to meet its financial obligations, it has also struggled to meet the academic obligations to its students. Time submitted an annual report to LACO that included NWEA benchmark data for the 2122 school year. However, no students took all three assessments given in the fall, winter, and spring for language usage, and only 8% of students took two out of three tests for language usage. Benchmark participation rates in all academic areas were significantly below the 95% threshold established by the SBE for verifiable student data. The majority of students, 2/3, did not meet the expected growth metric that would be required for renewal. This lack of student data directly impacts LACO's ability to assess student learning and causes concern regarding the school's process for assessing students, as well as how instructional decisions are being made. On June 28, Time submitted a revised version of the annual report based on additional data requested by LACO. This updated report did not change the findings related to the school failing to report benchmark data for all students and low student participation. In addition, the report did not include an analysis of NWEA conditional growth index data as also requested by LACO. Troublingly, the report incorrectly compares CAS proficiency data from Montebello Unified School District to Time's NWEA growth data. Time's growth data is based on NWEA assessments, which are in no way designed to be comparable to CAS proficiency data. Time's continued attempt to compare these incongruous metrics again causes concern over Time's ability to analyze their data. With regard to operations, the school facility that Time occupied in 2122 did not align with the facility design included in the charter petition. The petition includes an illustration of an open classroom space with border-free classrooms and a central learning hub designed to support the unique Time Community Schools' learning model. Despite discussions regarding how accommodations and modifications might be made for the school to be more reflective of the learning model described in the petition, Time continued to reflect a traditional standard program throughout the 2122 school year. In regards to staffing, the 2223 proposed staffing list does not include a full-time counselor. The originally approved petition included one counselor in year one, adding an additional counselor in years two and three. During the 2122 school year, Time did hire a counselor. However, after staff turnover in the fall, the counseling position was left vacant. The immediate, the impact was immediate, as the school admitted that the loss of the counselor early in the school year caused participation errors with benchmark testing. Dr. Ramirez, the Time Executive Director, has stated that he will continue to assume counseling responsibilities. However, he does not hold a counseling credential, and has cited experience with college admissions and scheduling only. In addition to academic support, a counselor plays a significant role in the social emotional lives of students, particularly during this time where we have seen increases in the social emotional needs of students resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic and traumatic experiences outside of school. Failure to include this critical staff position calls into question Time's ability to adequately serve the needs of its students. Finally, there are some additional concerns for the board to take into account. Time has submitted a material revision to change locations and modify the school calendar for the upcoming school year. It is unclear how and when the school will make necessary upgrades to the proposed private location. The material revision includes an affidavit which states that Time will complete the required facilities fixes contingent upon LACO providing the school a letter of good standing for the sale of receivables. LACO has previously met with members of the Time Board and the Executive Director, and informed them that a letter of good standing would not be issued. Time is also awaiting an accreditation term based on its initial WASP visit in April of 2022. Lastly, there is a concern regarding the organizational guidance provided by the Time Board in light of the previously mentioned fiscal, academic, and instructional program concerns.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. In summary, while there has been some extenuating circumstances, such as the COVID pandemic, that does not change the fact that despite widespread guidance and support, Time has been unable to demonstrate fiscal sustainability, program adherence, or positive student outcomes. Thank you so much, and I will now hand the presentation back to CDE staff.
Thank you, LACO staff, for the presentation. So in conclusion, the CDE and LACO believe that there is substantial evidence that TCS engaged in a fiscal mismanagement, failed to meet or pursue any of the pupil outcomes identified in the charter petition, and committed a material violation of the conditions, standards, or procedures set forth in the charter petition. The CDE recommends that the SBE consider issuing a notice of violation to TCS. And as stated in the draft, no notice of violation that is included in your item, TCS does have until July 20 to respond to the notice of violation. And that ends our presentation.
All right. Do you want to put up the public comment slide? So we will now open the phone line for public comment. Members of the public wishing to provide comment on the item may do so by calling the telephone number and using the access code provided on the slide that is shown now. While we're waiting for members of the public to queue up for comment, I want to ask Vice President Glover Woods and Member Olken if they have any initial comments. And then if we have any clarifying questions, we'll take those, and then we'll go to public comment. Vice President Glover Woods.
Thank you, President Darling Hammond. Just to help to frame what we will be deciding in this particular item, again, we've received a lot of information regarding the concern, as well as information we've received from the charter itself. The action that we would be looking at today would be to issue a notice of violation. It's not a revocation, but a notice of violation to provide opportunity in a formal manner for the charter to respond to some of the concerns that have been brought forward.
Thank you. Member Olken?
I don't have anything to add at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. In terms of clarifying questions, I'm going to ask one, and then invite others if they have clarifying questions as well. One of the first points on the list of concerns is fiscal mismanagement, and I saw plenty of evidence of fiscal instability and concern. I don't know that I understood what the mismanagement point was, and maybe you could clarify that for us.
Thank you, President Hammond. Thank you for the question. I'm happy to answer that. We really saw fiscal mismanagement for Time as three big, big items. One, their lack of a strategic plan to get out of debt. Two, their failure to prioritize actions to adhere to the PCSGP grant requirements and to pursue other grant opportunities. And then finally, their failure to adjust their expenditures to reflect the actual budget.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? All right. With that, we will go to public comment, if there is some.
Yes, we have five callers in the queue. I will open up the phone line now. Good afternoon. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Good afternoon. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, I hope it's me that's talking. Mark Scott is my name. I'm a former Los Angeles County Officer of Education employee. Did about twenty years there in crisis intervention. My comment is to a pretty small window, but I'll try to describe it as quickly as possible. I just saw an incredible effort in community support and culture working with the facilities that were limited in opportunity. I won't say there was hostility, but certainly there was difficulty in accessing the facilities. But I still saw a lot of progress in using the facility for everything from open area workshops in the auditorium to open area labs in the science lab. But what I was most impressed with was their trauma mitigation. And from my perspective, working in MTSS and PBIS, seeing that they had reduced office referrals, that resulted more in access to curriculum, which is my perspective.
Thank you, caller. Your time is up. Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning, State Board of Education members. My name is Lorraine Richards, and I am a classroom teacher representing the California Teacher Association. CTA supports the CDE's recommendation that the State Board of Education consider issuing a notice of violation to Time Community Schools. As outlined in the item, Time has committed the following: fiscal mismanagement, failure to meet or pursue any of the pupil outcomes identified in the charter petition, and violation of several conditions, standards, or procedures set forth in the charter petition. These issues were clearly predicted by the CDE during the July two thousand and twenty hearing for Time, and now it is time for the State Board of Education to take action by issuing the notice of violation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Kimada from the Montebello Teachers Association. I am in support of a violation notice going to Time Charter because of the local and county denial showing strong indicators that the students are being compromised regarding their safety, their security, and their academic stability. There is no counselor, there is no accreditation, and there's insufficient assessment data. There is, however, clear fiscal responsibility. During this climate in America, safety is paramount, and Time Charter shows no indication of doing anything to support the security and safety of students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Zlal, and I work at Montebello High School, and I'm here as a member of the Montebello Teachers Association. And speaking in favor of the notice of violation to the Time Community Charter, item eighteen, the school should have never been approved after it was denied by the Montebello Unified School Board and the Los Angeles County Office of Education. This is a disservice to students at both Time Charter and Montebello High. Time Charter lacked participation in benchmark assessments, has no accreditation, and did not provide counselors. Time Charter provided broken promises to its students and families. Observations alone revealed attendance was an issue at Time Charter. Montebello High School provided multiple classrooms to Time Charter, and it barely had enrollment to host a partial class. Time Community has had trouble managing student behavior. Students disrupted educational services at Montebello High School because they tried to integrate themselves into the Montebello High School classrooms because they wanted to be part of the traditional high school and not the charter. Time Charter destroyed substantial equipment in the computer lab paid for by the district, and they only used that they own use and did not notify anyone.
Thank you, caller. Your time is up. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Lamar Brown, the President of Time Community Schools. I'm here today to provide assurance that SBE is taking, asking for in regards to our financial statement capacity. The TCS Board conducts every meeting committed to transparency, mindfulness, integrity, and a desire to look out for the interests of all stakeholders. As the President, it is honored to work with TCS, and no one understands the fiscal responsibility that has been bestowed upon us within the last school, past school year. Has been challenging the Board, the Executive Director, and the TCS team, revigilant and examining our finances throughout the year. We made tough decision to cut expenditures to ensure our academic program could continue to operate successfully. We have utilized best practices and tapped into resources that charter schools regularly use, especially startups. Currently, our enrollment is nearly doubled what it was last year, and we add students each day. We have the students and the budget to be viable and sustainable. Please do not move forward with this notice because TCS has provided the, will provide the evidence, the tenacity, and commitment to operate what we would believe to best be the best school in the state of California.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning, President Darling Hammond and esteemed Board members. My name is Gina Pleak from the California Charter Schools Association. The State Board unanimously approved this school back in two thousand and twenty as the Board saw the value that it was bringing to this local community. And then, while we thought we knew what the impacts of the pandemic were, the truth is nobody could have predicted the many challenges that came up when trying to open a school during the pandemic and in a Prop thirty-nine facility. The challenges that you have read about in your materials, including the info included in recent legal action, resulted in fewer enrollments than projected, and this is not fiscal mismanagement and should not be characterized as such. Now, however, the school is in its own facility and not facing the many burdens they faced previously. School starts on August seventeenth, and if you issue this notice, you will only impede the momentum that the school has finally generated. We respectfully request that you not issue the notice of violation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller, you are live. Please state your name and affiliation.
Hi, my name is Brandy Price. I'm the Vice President of the TCS Board. TCS opened its doors to students in July two thousand and twenty-one, and children who were not thriving in traditional schools found their way to us. The incoming ninth grade class GPA was one point seven one, and for tenth grade it was one point two. The innovative Time Learning Model was created for all students and especially for those who have not experienced success in school often or yet. The TCS ninth grade semester two class GPA was two point seven seven and for tenth grade, two point five six. Grades indicate something beyond academic achievement, engagement. Our students became invested in school, and it showed. Anyone fortunate enough to visit the campus saw it. Next year, TCS, this upcoming school year, TCS will have its own facility of significant development. The Proposition Thirty-nine facility did not appeal to families and consequently be lost enrollment. Notably, our enrollment has already nearly doubled. This year, we had challenges but also so many successes. Nearly fifty percent of our students had GPs of one point oh or below the year before joining us. It was a course
Thank you, caller. Your time is up. Thank you, caller. That concludes public comment for item number eighteen.
All right, thank you very much. I want to allow three minutes of time for Dr. Gabriel Ramirez, the school's leader, to address the board.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good morning, President Darling Hammond and SBE Board members. My name is Dr. Gabriel Ramirez, and I am the Executive Director and Founder of Time Community Schools. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, although I wish the invitation was rooted in celebrating the many successes of Time. Like our many school-wide academic improvements, the growth of our student leaders, development of partnerships, and the many stories of individual student transformations. Also, I'd like to share that we were just informed that we will be moving on to the final round for membership to the League of Innovative Schools, a national network that connects and supports the most forward-thinking leaders in education, started by the Department of Education under President Obama. Today, I will provide you with the facts and assurance needed to dismiss this notice of violation. The first finding attempts to connect fiscal mismanagement to low enrollment. This is a false equivalent. While TCS did not meet first-year projections due to the global pandemic and the challenging relationship we had with our local district, Time has worked diligently to increase our enrollment, and currently, TCS has seventy-two fully registered students with another sixteen in process of completing registration, a total of eighty-eight families. TCS has essentially increased its enrollment by over a hundred percent. Also, TCS has over two hundred families who have expressed interest in our school, so we continue to recruit, and our numbers will increase. TCS has provided Laco the names of our registered families, which is the evidence needed to demonstrate that our projections are not unrealistic. In order to give more assurance, we have reworked our budget at eighty-five students, and Time is financially viable and is able to meet its reserve requirement. Next, the finding alleges that Time did not meet pupil outcomes identified in the charter petition. To clarify, Time's petition identifies pupil outcomes in relation to state assessments, and Time did not assess students because we currently do not have an eleventh grade class to provide any data. And in regards to NWEA benchmarks, Time has provided all data to Laco, including all other academic data requested. TCS looks forward to sharing students' state assessment scores once we have an eleventh grade class to establish a baseline and then to compare to future classes. We have pursued the pupil outcomes, using the NWA assessment as a benchmark. The third finding provides that Time committed a mature revision in relation to our charter petition, specific to facilities. In our charter petition, we described our ideal of what we would like our school to someday look like. However, in our charter petition, we also acknowledged that this might not be possible due to facility requirements and our growth. TCS has made every effort to incorporate the furniture, the physical design, and use of collaborative procedures to transform every classroom into a tool to aid in learning and meet our vision, despite the constraints of Prop thirty-nine. On July twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty, the SBE approved Time's charter position because the SBE believed in our innovation and capacity. Time has made extraordinary progress and has had a profound impact on our community. We have addressed all concerns, financial and academic, and have demonstrated that we are viable and capable.
Thank you.
Let the board not move forward with the notice of violation. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We are open for board discussion. I wonder if I could ask the, ask Stephanie to put up the motion as it is currently framed. Member Escobedo and then Vice President Glover Woods.
Yeah, I have a question on the pupil outcomes in the sense of utilizing benchmarks typically to judge charters. Is that consistent? Because my understanding of benchmarks are used to really plan for future instruction and kind of reflect on the next quarter or semester. I'm just curious on that area and how it's being used or applied in this case.
Do you, I'm not sure I completely understand your question. Are you directing that to Director Ramirez?
Uh, yes, yes. Or in general with, with CDE is, I'm just curious why, why they found substantial evidence in, in that area, number two.
Given that we don't yet have state tests available.
Exactly. I think, I just find it premature, you know.
May I respond?
Sure.
Yes, well, I would agree with you, Board Member Escobedo. I would say that that is, that you're correct. If you look at what's listed on the screen, it says identified in the charter petition, which benchmarks are not. Further, according to the Laco MOU, when they do refer to internal benchmarks, there is just a reference to submit those, which we did, and there is no timeline or deadline listed in the Laco MOU. So, in speaking to Laco at the time, they asked for it, they, specifically when we spoke to our coordinator, and the initial discussion that was had was that we were supposed to submit, we were, they asked us to submit it when we could, but that by July that they would like to have that, and then the timeframes changed very quickly. But ultimately, you know, schools are supposed to be charged according to the dashboard year-to-year, not within one school year. So this, this finding to me just seems to be not in line with what was meant to happen in terms of charter schools.
I'd like to respond to that a little bit as.
Hang on a second. Wait a minute. I'll, I'll get to you if we complete this part. Okay? Director Ramirez, did you finish your statement?
Uh, yes.
Seems like you're interrupted.
Sorry, um, yes, unless there's any other further questions to clarify.
Okay. So, Mr. Sicarelli, go ahead and offer your view.
Uh, yeah, so currently, you know, when we're looking at charter schools, we're always looking towards renewal. And currently, under education code, one of those standards for renewal is showing year-over-year academic progress for all students. And the state has issued a list, CDE has issued a list of what is considered verifiable data, and what is, what are the metrics to be used for that, that piece of evidence? And NWEA CGI is one of the metrics that is identified. So that is something we ask all of our charter schools to have one of those identified verifiable data pieces that they are tracking in order for them to be able to make their argument for renewal. And so when we look at those scores, one, you know, it was difficult because we didn't always get, we didn't get the actual CGI, which is the approved metric by the state. But even so, looking at that NWA data, we certainly did not see a majority of students that were meeting that standard of year-over-year growth.
We're talking about a charter that's only been around for a year, so could we have year-over-year growth?
No, it's, it's, that's the point of the verifiable data piece. That's the point of NWA is that it's standardized so that you can do your pre-test and your post-test, and you can actually see if there was an expected growth for that time, specific time period. So, we can see sort of that, that, you know, if it's too, if it's, excuse me, fall to spring or winter to spring, that particular growth metric is standardized for that particular time period, and you can determine whether the students actually met their expected growth or not. And that's what we looked at and saw that majority of students did not meet their expected growth for that specific.
But you did have test scores for them, so the assessment was conducted. I'm gonna move on to a member Glover Woods and Member Olken, who have their hands up. Thank you.
Thank you, President Darling Hammond. Was that for me to go?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you very much. Director Ramirez, thank you so much for sharing as you have with us. And as was indicated, the, the Board, the State Board of Education, did approve this charter, even though it was recommended not to. So I think that shows kind of a vote in confidence of the merits of the charter petition at the time when it was decided to move forward. And I keep that in mind as I look forward to where we are now. Also recognizing, we do, did have the pandemic, and that did have an impact on all of the schools here in California. But to date, there have been two notices of concern that have been issued to the charter, and those issues have not yet been rectified, which is why this item is before us today. So just to reiterate again, the notice of violation, in my lens, provides opportunity for the formal process to begin so that we can, as a board, hear more information and more of the specifics to support our refute really what those concerns are. So again, just want to reemphasize that an action on this particular item is not to choose to revoke the charter, close the school, or anything along that line. It just opens the more formal process for us to receive more information related to some of the concerns that have been brought up, so that we can make an informed decision moving forward.
Uh, Member Olken?
Thank you, and thank you, Vice President Glover Woods, for reframing the purpose of the notice of violation. Because as a new board member and the leader of a district-approved charter, this is something that is, it's not a common occurrence, so it's good to get the reiteration of the point of it. I just wanted to comment on the, the number two, the failed to meet or pursue any of the pupil outcomes identified in the charter petition. I, the, in the, in the time since this school opened, we've all, I think, had to pivot in one way or another in terms of thinking about what the most important outcomes are for kids as they were dealing with a worldwide crisis. And I think I, while academic outcomes are obviously our first, our first priority, I think I, while academic outcomes are obviously our first and our first priority, um I think they absolutely can't be our sole priority. And um, so I just, I think it's important to recognize the the way in which the time period of the opening of this school may have impacted certainly number two on this list and perhaps the others as well. Um, I I am most interested in 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 understanding um, the financial position of the school in order to meet its obligations to its staff. Um, and perhaps that's what this notice of violation would allow us to um dig further into. Um, but I also was interested in hearing about the revised budget based on only having eighty five students. Um, because perhaps there already has been addressed.
Director Ramirez, did you want to respond to that?
Yes, if I may. Um, thank you so much for the question. And and yes, I I would agree with um President Darling Hammond in regards to the term fiscal mismanagement. I mean, when you look up fiscal mismanagement, it it really is a term that that relates to gross abuse and negligence and time is not in any way engaged in that. Yes, there has been financial instability. And so what Lego has asked in the conversation from us really is this this issue of low enrollment. And so they said to us what they thought the magic number was eighty students. And so, you know, in the time that they issued the 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 notice on June twenty eighth, that would that seemed to be the they what they believe the magic number. So like I shared with you in in my response, we currently have seventy two fully registered families with another sixteen in process right now. That brings us to eighty eight. In addition to the other families that we have listed that have an interest that we're continuing to pursue one month still prior to school opening. So again, they stated that that they believe that it was um that we didn't have the capacity or that the projections were unreachable. And then these numbers that I'm sharing with you, it that is just not the case. We are going to reach these numbers. So and after receiving this notice, you know, we were instructed to start running numbers. Can you achieve a budget on eighty five, no eighty students? We did it on eighty five because as of right now, we even look at eighty eight, but I want it, I did it on eighty five. And on eighty five students, time community schools is viable and we do meet the three percent reserve. So what I would say is that first, again, number one fiscal mismanagement, I I just think is a terrible mischaracterization of our school. Because we are so committed to our school and our community and being transparent and making sure that we make decisions that really support our programs and our staff and what we're attempting to do. So I I would I would again um argue that, you know, the three findings, one, two, and three simply do not apply to us. And even so, we still have um have addressed all of these issues to make sure that there are no concerns moving forward. So thank you again, and 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 I'll answer any other questions if you if you require more clarification.
Are there other questions? I have a question for our C D E staff. There are um terms like fiscal mismanagement that would be understood, for example, as um corruption of some sort as opposed to uh instability and challenges. Um, and I wonder whether when we make the, when we are voting on uh the notice, whether it uh in fact comes with these characterizations. Uh, I also wonder about the characterization of fail fail to pursue any of the pupil outcomes as opposed to fail to meet. It seems um frankly like overreach in the language.
So that is uh the reasons outlined in ed code to um to issue a notice of violation. So I'm not a hundred percent sure how we can change those in in the resolution. So I welcome um any input from from S B E General Counsel on that on in terms of the actual resolution language.
Uh, so again, Stephanie is correct. This is what the ed code says. And if you will recall, um, last winter, the board issued a notice of violation for the collegiate academy. And one of the allegations was also fiscal mismanagement. And that has to do with in instability as Lego has laid out. The fact that they're buying on on borrowing receivables, that there is some concern that staff and STIRS, there's not sufficient funding to pay a staff and STIRS moving forward. And that is the long accepted definition of fiscal mismanagement. And this this is what is in ed code. And I'd like to reiterate what um Board Member Glover Woods said. This this is a first step in the process. Um, at the A C C S, should the board decide to issue the notice of violation, the school will have a chance to prepare, respond, and there'll be a thorough hearing at A C C S to go over whether the response adequately respond. You know, adequately, if they adequately have a plan to respond to some of the concerns Lego has alleged. And that will be the place where the A C C S can really dive into the merits of um merits of some of these issues. But this is the first step in a formal process, and there are plenty of opportunities for them to respond moving forward.
Is that also the case, Judy, with respect to statements like fail to meet or pursue any of the pupil outcomes, which uh makes it sound as though there's not even been an effort to educate the students, which
And and again, I would.
We have not heard any evidence of of that.
Yeah, uh, yes, you you're correct, President Darling Hammond, and that that is true, but it is an or. So again, this is we're issuing a notice of violation, the school will have an opportunity to respond to all of these allegations and their plan moving forward. The A C C S will deliberate on whether that plan sounds real. And then that that may or may, and then that will come back to the board in September. I I would say one thing with the timing, um, the pandemic is certainly caused a lot of instability in the system. But the other thing to keep in mind is when the school closes mid-year, and I'm not saying that that's something that's going to happen with this school. I we certainly have no evidence of that. But one of the reasons why these often come to you in the summer is because a mid-year closure is often very difficult um on the families, the students and the staff involved. So I think that's that's partially, I think someone had a question about the timing and it it's it's unfortunate and it's unfortunate that the pandemic has um, you know, caused enrollment problems for many schools. Um, but they again, that leads to a lot of the fiscal problems that we are hearing from Lego here.
Member Olken?
Thank you. Yeah, I just I just wanted to um elevate the idea that um, one of the one of the real issues that's um plaguing this school seems to be student enrollment. And um issuing a notice of violation would probably or would could potentially try not to um predict the future, could potentially exacerbate that. Um, and so in essence, you know, there are students who are um in the process of registration. And so I just, you know, I just want to point out th- this could be a self-fulfilling prophecy. Um, and I wonder, um, in the public comment, there weren't any students or families um speaking up. And I wonder if that's um because in order to maintain a sense of stability in the school um, that families don't know, you know, I mean, I I'm, I truly am um, thinking through the lens of what I would do as a school leader and the types of calculations um, I would be making. Um, but it's striking both that we didn't hear from any students or families. Um, and then in my mind, I have this sense of perhaps why not?
Is that a question?
Um.
And if so, who are you directing this to?
Yeah, if so, so the so the first part was just a something to point out about the impact of enrollment on when there's stability in a school, uh instability in a school. And then the second, I guess, is a question for the director. Um, if his community is aware of this um potential that we're discussing today.
Um, thank you for the question and for the and the thoughtfulness of it. Um, yes, I I think, you know, again, in looking at at number one in terms of you know, issuing the notice, I mean, that is one of our concerns as well. You know, we have made a lot of progress. We and and, you know, Lego throughout the year, it always is commenting on the progress that we make and and our commitment, our work ethic, you know, at one point in the last meeting, in fact, that we had with Lego, Lego described me as extraordinary. So there is an acknowledgement that uh we work very hard and that we're committed to this school. And so we're trying to do everything in our power to give the families the confidence that they need to enroll in our school, given the the fact, too, that we are within a district that has been very challenging. And so we we have all these different um factors that affect us and 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 we we have, we've been combating them all year. So with that, yes, there there has been little um little information given to families to to not give that concern of that there is a of this huge possibility of closure, like we've been very um strategic in how we've shared that information and and it's been more on a as families have asked questions, we have provided if there were any and and have just been very minimal in sharing that information.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, uh, is there a motion? I think the fact that we're not receiving a motion, oh, there we go. They reflect some of the discomfort on the board. I don't know. Um, and I and I wondering whether there are steps that we can take to trigger the um responses that are needed from the school uh, short of a notice of violation with the kind of language that this includes.
I don't I don't know of any, President Darling Hammond. I don't know if you wanted me to answer that, but I I don't know of any. And I I just want to say that, you know, this really is their o- uh opportunity to respond uh, in a way, they they've offered a lot of new information here today that was not um given to C D E or Lego prior to writing of this item um or posting of this item. So, you know, this is all new information um that they are are sharing today. And so the notice of violation would give um both C D E and Lego an opportunity to review it um in a thoughtful uh way, um which obviously we can't do it now. So I I I think this is the this is the the way for the school to um show how they have uh, how they are going to respond to the concerns.
Vice President Glover Woods?
And then. I I had a question. I I I had a question. Um, Director Farland, to the point that you made. Um, are you able or is is it possible to res- to review the new information that's been received with the new enrollments and all of the uh new budget and uh various things that Director Ramirez has shared? Is it possible to have that reviewed absent um issuing a notice of violation? Or is a notice of violation required in order to review the new information that has been presented since the item was written?
I think this is a question to Stephanie Farland. Is that right?
I'm sorry. I thought she was asking, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you were asking Lego. I I apologize. Um, w- well, we certainly and Lego can can review information um certainly at any time, but um, if for if, for instance, we review it and it's not a cure or a remedy to all of the concerns, then we certainly have to come back and do this process all over again um in order to move on to the next step. So I I don't, we we would have to repeat it.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Judy says, I'd like to um add to what Stephanie said. So if if the board chooses to not issue a notice of revocation now, certainly we can ask that Lego continue to work with the school. Um, should should Lego still have concerns after they review the new information the school has provided today? Um, then it's possible they would need to come back to the board for a notice of violation in September. And then that would mean that the revocation hearing would happen in in theory, if the board decided to issue a notice of violation in September, then a revocation hearing would happen in November.
Uh, member Escobedo, you had, oh, member Glover Woods, did you want to follow up on that before I take the next question?
No, please go to member Escobedo and then you can come back to me if no one else has their hand up. Thank you.
Member Escobedo.
Yeah, I I was in line with um member Woods if if we can just table this. Um, if we take no action, we could obviously hear this later. And I I just from me, I I I want to make sure this this is a important decision because a notice of violation can lead to revocation. And, you know, that 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 will be something will be um I I I agree with member Olken that that could actually create a self-fulfilling prophecy as well. So I I just want to make sure that before I make a decision, I have all the facts and and I'm I'm still hung up with number two. Um, I I just don't feel like I I'm I'm comfortable in in making this significant decision. This is more than just procedural.
Member Roscoe Gonzalez?
I I just want to um kind of bring up with um one of our members, I think it was um, Ms. Ms. Olken brought up, I'm concerned that we didn't hear from the community from the students of the school. Um, I would have liked to have heard from the students who attend um time charter and to see how the school impacts them, maybe from the teachers. And um, for me, that would have made an impact. Um, but otherwise, since they didn't have anyone from the community, then I feel like the investment is not fully there.
Yeah, I think we heard that they are not necessarily aware of this action.
Yeah, and that's what concerns me because I feel that one of the biggest things that I think that school districts do is they really encompass um the community. You know, we're we build bridges, we build partnerships, and we invest in our communities. And I would like to have heard from the teachers who are invested, the parents and the students, because this impacts them also. And their voice is vital.
And it's an awkward process because this is not the place where that is set up to happen. Um, and the point at which that would happen, it would be at a hearing about the revocation, at which point it begins to feel like it's, you know, way down the road. So we're, you know, again, it's a procedural challenge that we are facing. Um, member Glover Woods, and then what member Lewis is also. Go ahead, member Glover Woods, do you want to?
I I I do. Um, I I I just want to say I um definitely concur with the feeling of um many of my fellow members on the board. Uh, this is a very difficult um difficult decision. And I too would have wanted to hear a bit more from those who are vested in the school, either um in written correspondence or um in during public uh public comment today. And absent that, it's it's a little difficult. Um, one thing that continues to weigh on me is the fact that there have been two notices of concern that have already uh been issued and apparently have not been resolved to the um to the desire of the county office. And that is why this is before us today. I definitely understand how issuing a notice of violation can impact the registrations that are currently uh in place for the charter and that are desperately needed for the charter. Um, I'm just not sure that weighs or or outweighs, if you will, the um, the implication of not issuing a notice of violation today and hoping that this time around, the third time around, that the areas of concern would be resolved so that this is not before us again later in the school year where we would uh need to take action on issuing a notice of violation. And if we do and things are not resolved, um, moving forward with a revocation. So I just um, again, understand for myself, just the quandary, if you will, in making this decision. Um, I I do feel, however, that Um, I, I do feel however, that probably the best way to try to bring this to resolution and hopefully a resolution in benefit of the charter itself is to move forward with the notice of violation, um, so that we can, uh, get resolution to the concerns that have been brought forward. And, uh, one last thing, I will say, the language in ed code is quite unfortunate that, um, because it does, I do believe, send a message, but I also understand that if that's the way the ed code is written, uh, we have to adhere to that particular language as we move forward.
Uh, I saw, uh, a hand from, um, member Lewis.
President Darling Hammond, I apologize, but I do not have the icon at the bottom to raise my hand. I don't know what happened. I don't know what happened.
It does seem to show up, but I, yeah.
And I looked in the apps, I can't find it in the apps.
No worries.
I apologize for that, but, you know, I, I agree with everything that has been said by our, uh, my fellow board members, uh, about how difficult this is, especially hearing from Mr. Ramirez, and he, he's very heartfelt, he's very sincere about all of the efforts that they are making, uh, to keep the school open and to provide the opportunity for students. But I've all, I was, I've been listening and I'm trying to think of, you know, what would be a reason, a really valid reason not to move forward with issuing, um, the, uh, notice of violation, other than what I've heard about that it could impact the number of, uh, parents and students who decide to, to go to the school. Well, it could also, if, if the, they have two hundred names of students who have prepped, uh, uh, have expressed interest in being a part of the school, and seventy-two that are committed with another sixteen in progress, it may also do the opposite. It may actually motivate those parents to know that, hey, if we really want to be a part of this innovative school and we want to be a part of keeping it open, then we have to, to move and act on our enrollment. And then there's no guarantee if we, um, don't move forward with this, that all of those, those parents will, and students will step forward and the enrollment will be at the magic number it needs to be to make the budget work and, um, and the school can move forward. I too have concerns about the other two notices that were issued, and then there wasn't an appropriate or an acceptable response to those. So I do believe that this is the opportunity, um, you know, with the notice of violation for the school to just continue to work as hard as they're working, the staff to get the students and the parents on board to be a part of the school, and which is, I hope that that's what really, that happens and that they're able to move forward. And then, uh, in August, when the ACCS reviews things, that everything is in a good place and the school can move forward for the year. But I, I really think there's a benefit to, uh, both to the school and, and to all those concerned to, to issue the notice and get the proof on the table and all of the resources and things that are needed to make the school move forward. So, that's.
Appreciate that. I see, um, another, uh, I see member Glover Woods raising her hand. Um, I'll just note that, uh, what, I think all of the logic around getting the answers to the questions clearly on the table is, is good logic. I think I heard Stephanie say that, that could be done in any event. Concerns here are about whether there might be a mid-year closing. I am, continue to be troubled by the language of the notice, which I think is not accurate to the work of the school around, um, pursuing academic achievement and, um, engaging in fiscal mismanagement. So I, I will just leave that. Uh, member Olken?
Um, thank you for calling me, but I think, I think you had already said you were going to, um, go with, um, member, with Vice President Glover Woods next, or was that it? No? Sorry, I just don't want to jump.
No, go ahead. Yeah, Vice President Glover Woods, go ahead.
President Darling Hammond, I can defer to, uh, member Olken, uh, for her comment first.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to, um, comment on the language one more time that you just mentioned, President Darling Hammond. Um, it, it's, your question about whether it could be changed, and the answer was it can't be because those are the reasons in ed code that we would issue a notice of violation, um, is troubling to me because, or it's not, it, it's important to me because if what we think is those words aren't the right ones, uh, I'm, we can't change them because we don't have the right to issue a notice of violation if those things aren't met. Um, and so just your, your, your questioning around the language and what it means, um, is, I think, i- is important. Um, I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
All right. I think, um, member Glover Woods, it is the ball is in your court.
Okay, thank you, President Darling Hammond. I'm, I'd like to move forward with the motion on this item, please. And I do move that we issue a notice of violation and, um, pursuant to the ed code that is cited in the item. Thank you.
And is there a second?
I seconded.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion of the item? Uh, Brooks will call a roll call vote.
Member Manaca?
Hi.
President Darling Hammond?
Nay.
Member Escobedo?
Nay.
Vice President Glover Woods?
Yes.
Member Lewis?
Yes.
Member McQuillan?
Nay.
Member Olken?
Nay.
Member Roscoe Gonzalez?
Yes.
Member Pitillo Brownson?
Yes.
Member Rodriguez?
I think she might have had to have left for her flight.
Leave for her flight. So the motion carries.
All right. Thank you all for, uh, a very intensive board meeting and
Excuse me?
Yes.
Do, do we have, um, Executive Director Allen, do we have six, six I-votes? We need six I-votes for our motion to carry pursuant to ed code.
No, we have five.
So then the board has taken no action unless there, unless someone wants to reconsider the motion, that, that results in no action by the board.
Thank you.
Right, then the board has taken no action. Uh, thank you for the very intense, uh, deep board meeting. Uh, thank you all for your, uh, very, um, determined, uh, participation. And I hereby adjourn our July twenty-twenty-two State Board of Education meeting at twelve forty-nine PM. I look forward to seeing you in September.
Thanks, everybody.